Okay, these are different. This has to be green for you to speak, so be aware it's not red this time. Okay, I'm calling to order the study session of the El Camino Real specific plan market feasibility analysis of new development. So I see that there are five planning commissioners here present, which constitutes a quorum, and then members of the El Camino Real Community Advisory Committee, so we can begin the study session. So for the study session and the public, the planning and consultant team will make a presentation, Planning Commission and CAC, then there will be a Planning Commission and CAC comment question period, then there will be a period for public comment and wrap-up. Some of you may have noticed that one of the agendas said that we would end the study session at seven, that is not true. We will go as long as required to answer all public questions. Thank you. So staff, would you like to present? Mr. Cortez, there's a name badge for you over there, you can sit over anywhere you want.
Thanks.
Thank you. Leslie Xavier, Principal Planner with the City of Santa Clara. I'm just going to quickly introduce our consultant team that's working on the El Camino Real specific plan with us. They're going to be doing the presentation for you this evening. We have Erin Welch, who's with Ramey &amp; Associates, who's our urban design consultant. We also have Jerry Kaiser with Kaiser Marston &amp; Associates, and Christine Firstenberg with Retail Real Estate Resources. And they're going to be providing you the presentation this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry.
So what we'd like to do this evening, if you could give me a favor?
You have to, it has to be green.
Better? Okay. Yes, I see a green light, so I'm good. All right. So what we'd like to do this evening, I'm going to take a few minutes to open it up, and then Christine is going to go into some greater details that I think you'll find very interesting. What we want to talk about here, the slide says "development opportunities," but it's also related to influences and issues of development. So with that in mind, we are going to talk specifically about how the specific plan that is currently understudied and under-processed can contribute to commercial and residential development on the ECR. And I'm going to talk about the ECR, I don't know whether you all use that for El Camino Real, but obviously we all know what it is we're talking about. Okay. And so specifically, we want to focus on how ground-for commercial real estate can be successful, and then issues and potential of attracting large store commercial development, which is a tricky business these days, and Christine is going to speak to that in some way. The two people that are going to do this presentation for you are myself, just to give you one minute of background on Kaiser Marston Associates and me in particular, we have a statewide firm. I have had the pleasure of currently working with Ramey Associates as a subconsultant on the economic analysis, but prior to that, working for the city on that little football stadium that you built a few years ago, and where hopefully the football team will do better this year. And then next to that is the related development that you're probably all familiar with, that is moving right along after some legal issues that held it up for a while. Christine, why don't you just take off for one second and introduce yourself now, and then I'll come back and do a little bit more, and then turn it over to you.
Hi, I'm Christine Firstenberg with Retail Real Estate Resources. I have been a real estate broker, a commercial retail-only real estate broker for the last 30 years, and about 15 years ago, worked with the International Council of Shopping Centers to put together a program in Northern California that worked with cities and helped them understand retail development and vice versa, so conveying cities' requirements to retailers and conveying retailer requirements to cities. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Retail Real Estate Resources and ICSC in a small way.
Thanks, Christine. So what we want to do now is talk a little bit, set the stage for the focus that Christine will give us by talking about sort of what's going on big time in terms of real estate trends. As you can see from what's going on on the El Camino itself, very visible, obviously, is residential is the hot new use. There's a tremendous economy going on in the Bay Area, in the South Bay in particular, and that's causing a very dramatic demand for residential, and you can see that it's in fact happening before your very eyes. Commercial, however, is another story. Commercial has become very turbulent. We all know the impact of the selling online rather than selling in the store. There's a lot of changes going on. Christine is going to highlight those changes. So specifically, just to again set the stage for her, we have, in the residential side, we do have, however, a new factor that is beginning to be a real consideration, which is that while rents have gone up and sales prices have gone up dramatically, costs have gone up even more dramatically. So tight profit margins are at the moment pretty much the order of the day, and they are going to begin to have an effect on how much new construction will go forward and what it will take in order for that new construction to happen. That's on the residential side, which is, you know, the dominant use along with the retail and commercial that is on the El Camino Real, and that we can expect to be on the El Camino Real for the foreseeable future. The retail, to talk about that, the turbulence will continue, but the International Council of Shopping Centers, Christine just came back from their convention, indicates investors still value retail assets, especially if you have markets with limited supply, and if there's reasons, other reasons, why, either because of policy issues of a city, or because of just the way things are going in terms of overbuilding, that new development gets limited. So those are key factors there. And I'm going to conclude by just highlighting a few key industry trends that we ought to keep in mind as Christine speaks. One is e-commerce is not going to cause brick-and-mortar to disappear. It's going to cause it to change. Christine's going to spell some of those changes out for us. To set the stage again, there are five F's in retail that are thriving today: food, fitness, fashion, furniture, fun. Keep that in mind. Also, keep in mind that we've got the coming up pretty rapidly in the near future, self-driving cars and rideshare, and that's going to reduce the need for these huge amounts of surface parking that we have, and it's going to allow some, require and force some big changes, so anticipate that. One other factor that's occurring is the bottom on your screen up there, healthcare. Healthcare is becoming a growing force in real estate and is going into shopping centers. So all that is leading to new formats, and those new formats are starting to emerge, and that's where I'd like to turn it over to you, Christine.
Thank you, Jerry, and good evening Chairman Jane and Planning Commission members and CAC members. My name is Christine Firstenberg, I'm with Retail Real Estate Resources, and tonight I want to talk to you about retail. I've organized tonight's presentation into four different parts, and during the presentation, if there, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me, I can go ahead and answer questions and then continue to pick up. What we're in today, I like to call the retail revolution. It's not Armageddon, like Time Magazine indicated, it's the retail revolution and things are in change. As many of you have read, there is this big shift. According to Business Insider's May 2019 edition, it's expected that more than 7,000 store locations will close in 2019. This is 1,000 more than what closed in 2018, and 2018 was about 1,000 more than what closed in 2017. Some of the stores that you might know, Pela Shoe, Dress Barn, Family Dollar, even Chico's, some of the stores are closing and going out of business for good, and other stores are just taking advantage of this opportunity to close non-performing stores, but they still will be here. But it's a big, big change of losing that amount of square footage. Some of the tenants, again, more about the change, is some of the tenants that are still here, and they are expanding, they're actually going to smaller sizes. So a 20,000-foot tenant that was in the market last year is maybe now a 10,000-foot tenant, and I really am not joking when I say they're, they are getting 50% smaller in many cases. Adding to that, the tenants that are holding strong are trying hard to figure out how to do online retailing better, and they're trying to figure out how to deal with experiential retail. And what that means is that, once you come into their store, they want you to have an experience that you cannot duplicate by going online. So you might be able to buy their products online, but you won't be able to duplicate the experience that you have in their stores. And so there's a lot of experimentation going on with how to do experiential retail. We've seen it where food stores are combining restaurants, we've seen it where restaurants are combining food stores in them. I mean, there's all kinds of creativity going on with this right now, so it's actually quite exciting. One of the last things is, in the Bay Area, the large footprint retailer has always struggled to locate in the Bay Area, because we really are much denser than most places in the United States, other than the far coast, New York and Boston and some of the major cities. So the big retailers are, many of them still looking, but they're trying to figure out how to accommodate themselves into an urban footprint. Like you might notice, that Target has figured out how to go from 148,000 square feet down to 25,000 square feet. That's a, that took a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of money for Target to figure that out. Many of the other tenants are not able to figure out how to get to that kind of drop in size. Online purchases are also affecting how retail is changing. So not only is it the shortness of time that a tenant like Amazon can deliver your package, I mean, think about putting in an order on Tuesday night and you can get the package Thursday morning. Most retailers cannot do that. And so Amazon can do that because of the kind of money that they've put behind their delivery system and their whole system of moving goods and services, goods around the country, but most retailers can't do that. So competing with Amazon is very, very difficult, except for companies like Walmart and Target are trying to figure it out, but some of the smaller retailers, they won't get to one- and two-day shipping. So that, again, consumers are changing their habits, they like that one- and two-day shipping. One of the other impacts affecting retail today is the demographic change. Gen Z and the millennials have made a huge impact on retail. Gen Z and the millennials are not shopping like we all shopped in our 20s and 30s. They shop very differently, we have a few millennials in here, I think, and they can probably testify, but they put off buying large-ticket items until much later in life. Maybe some of you bought a house in your 20s. Rarely will you see anybody, any millennial, even in the country where housing is not as terribly expensive, they just don't buy like we bought in younger ages. So that's affecting the retailers, and some retailers are going out of business because they don't have the sales to support them. But brick-and-mortar is needed, and it's here to stay, it's just really changing. We are finding that some of the online retailers are actually looking now to go to brick-and-mortar. There's a few of them that have done it well, like Orby Parker and a couple of the others, many, many of the online retailers are not, they just don't understand how complicated it is to go into brick-and-mortar. But I think you'll see in the next five to 10 years, a lot of online retailers trying to come into brick-and-mortar. So again, we are not in an apocalypse. We are changing, it is what I call a revolution, but it is here to stay. It's just going to be some time where we have to change how we plan and how we design retail to help us. I thought I'd take a few moments to give you some general information about how retailers actually look for a location. I know there's been some thought by the Planning Commission about what kind of retailers can come on to El Camino Real, and where are some of our retailers in Santa Clara going, and why are they changing? So I thought a general information about why and how retailers make a decision might be helpful. I started with this slide because we've used this in our industry for many years, but it gives you an idea of how, of how different people in our industry see retail and how it should be built. Now, this is using a neighborhood shopping center as a template, which is typically a drugstore and a grocery store. But on the top left, you can see that that's typical, how a grocery store shopping center functions. You have the grocery store, you have the little shops around it, maybe you have a coffee store out front, and it all works fine. But if you go to the slide to the right of that, that would be how a developer might want to design a shopping center, because he makes a lot more money with all those pads in the middle of the shopping center, but it doesn't make it function very well. Now, on the bottom left is a picture of how an anchor tenant might choose to design a shopping center with no pads, nobody else there, just a sea of parking for the, you know, anchor tenant to get all of its customers in. And then, of course, the one to the bottom right is how a planning commission might design a shopping center, where you have parks and lakes and not, not a lot of retail. So this slide gives you, I just wanted to give you some background, the retail typologies, when I got into the business 30 years ago, this was the iron code. If you were a retailer that went into a community center, you went into a community center. You didn't go into a mixed-use building, you didn't go into an urban space, you went into a community center, or lifestyle tenants, or power centers. So every type of retail had its own category, and all the retailers stayed within the category that applied to them. Well, today, that's completely out. That doesn't apply at all. Different retailers go wherever they want to go. In fact, you might notice that, how many times lately have you seen a Target or a Costco at a mall? Well, that didn't happen 20 years ago, they would never be allowed in a mall 20 years ago. So again, it just shows you how things have changed so much. But what hasn't changed is that a retailer's location has one bottom line for the retailer, and that is, they need to make money out of that location. So whatever criteria they use, they use it to figure out how they can maximize sales out of that particular location. So basically, I wanted to go through some of how the retailers find out what is a good criteria for them. So the first thing that they do is they look at their shoppers, and they figure out what makes their shoppers shop, and who are their shoppers. They then overlay their operational efficiencies of their store onto that template of who their shoppers are and what their shoppers like to buy. Here are some basic criteria that is common through almost all of the retailers. Retail likes to be at the intersection of two main thoroughfares. They don't like to be, retail doesn't like to be on a side street or on a quiet street mid-block. Those kinds of spaces don't typically get leased. Sorry. Retailers need visibility, signage, and they want traffic. So that's why they like the intersection of two main thoroughfares, because they have the highest traffic counts at an intersection versus mid-block. And I know that Jerry said we're not going to need as much parking, but we still need parking. Retailers will turn away from a site if there is not parking for their customers, and that is because they want their customers' experience to be convenient. If you have to drive around and around and around looking for parking, sometimes if you're like me, you might just drive off, you won't stop and shop. The retailers want to get you in their stores, so they do need some parking for their, for their customers. Location criteria, how do the retailers locate their customers? They use trade area demographic analytics. What does that mean? It's very politically incorrect, but that's what they do. They do a deep dive into the demographics. So we all know about profiling, retailers profile, that's what they do. They look at who lives where, what kind of education there is, what kind of household income, high, low, medium, they look at all of these things, because that is how they determine who their shopper is. From the deep dive in demographics, they go to a site analysis. There's a lot of things that impact a site, so I'm going to run through some of these slides quickly. Site plan layout, the ingress and egress into a shopping area, the overall design, whether it's a shopping center or a mixed-use project, the design makes a difference. Cotenancy, that typically is more applicable in a shopping center, but it can make a difference in mixed-use projects, where there is other retail located next to the one retail space. Retailers like to be around other retailers. They will look also at the distance to their nearest competitors, and if their competitors have a space that is more convenient, they will probably turn down the site that you might be presenting to them, because they have to be as convenient as their competitors. Signage, parking, visibility, overall, it's all about the convenience for the customer. So some other important rules in retail, as I mentioned, retail likes to be at the intersection of two main thoroughfares, they do need parking. The one thing that you can, where you don't need parking is when there's a high pedestrian count in front of the retail space, but we're talking about 300 people a day walking by the retail space. So if you don't have that kind of pedestrian count in front of the retail space, you do need to accommodate with some parking. A shop tenant also likes to have a bigger trade area than just the residential, residents above them. And then with regard to zoning, you might want to allow for anchor tenant in your zoning, because they are needed for the health of the smaller tenants. So the third part is retail in mixed-use projects specifically. I've talked more general in the past, in this second part, third part is very specific to mixed-use. Developers will basically build the product that is the main product that they are developing. So if it's office or residential, that's what they will build the most of, and that's what they know. Many times, cities will require retail to be put on the bottom, but those residential developers often do not know how to build retail. So retail gets put in a mixed-use developer on the side street, it gets designed incorrectly, and it doesn't get leased. And the worst thing for a city is to have vacant retail spaces, especially in new residential buildings. Vacant retail spaces can become blighted, and it's the city council people, it's the planning commissioners, it's the CAC members that get told the problem later when people are unhappy with a vacant space. are unhappy with a vacant space. So it's very important for the health of cities to not have vacant retail space. Why some of the spaces don't get leased, let me go into more detail about that. First of all, design. Design is one of the most important things for getting a retail space leased. Retailers want to have the space about a minimum of 50 feet deep to 60 feet deep. If it's over, much over 60 feet deep, they can't merchandise in it. They need probably 16 feet wide, or else many of them cannot merchandise in it. If there's a large number of columns in the retail space, the retailers cannot merchandise around it. I was looking at some of the plans in Santa Clara, and I noticed one mixed-use project whose name I'm not going to mention because the poor developers not here. But the columns were in the middle of the retail spaces in a manner that would not be able for a retailer to merchandise around. So think about when you've gone to Starbucks or Pete's. Have you walked in and stood in line and stood next to a column in the middle of the space? Probably not. Because they won't take those spaces that have columns in the middle of the public spaces. So when the mixed-use retail spaces have columns in the middle, it's not going to get leased.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
You mentioned the 50 to 60-foot depths. Is it if it's deeper than that that it's a problem, or if it's shallower than that that it's a problem?
Both.
Or both? Could you just explain that quickly?
So Aaron just asked if the requirement about depths. It's terrible, but retailers are as finicky as they can be because they know what makes them money. If you build a space less than 50 feet deep, half or more of the retailers in this country cannot physically use that space. Because they've got very set criteria, that their C-suite and many departments have figured out exactly what the top efficiencies are for their space. If you design a space that's 30 feet deep, you'll cut out probably 50 to 60% of the retailers that could ever utilize that space. If you have a space that's over 60 feet deep, again, you're cutting out probably 50 to 60% of the retailers that could use that space. So the likelihood of it getting leased is much less than a space that's designed properly. Signage. Again, in design, a lot of times, you look at the overall building, you've got residential units above, it's important to get the right design. But putting large overhangs over the retail, what do you call that? The walkway underneath an overhang? Anyway, there's a special name for it. Thank you, a breezeway. So by having the breezeway and it hangs down over the retail spaces, the retail signage can't be seen. So if you're driving along and you're looking for, you know, your cup of coffee at 3:00 in the afternoon, and you're looking for, you can't see the signs. Retailers won't go into spaces that don't have good signage. Sign criteria is something that needs to be looked at by the planning commission and looked at from a retail perspective. Parking, again, I've talked about parking before. Parking's very controversial, and I understand so. And we are going to have, this is, parking is changing. But again, parking, we may not have self-driving cars for 10 years, maybe, five years, whatever the time is, I don't know. But until we have no people driving on the streets, we need to accommodate some parking for our retailers. The last one is the improper location for retail activity. As I mentioned earlier, retailers like to be at the intersection of two main thoroughfares. Again, if they're on a side street, they will not be successful on that side street as they could be if they were on a main thoroughfare. So again, retail on a side street will not be leased as quickly or ever as retail on a main thoroughfare. So when you're looking at new projects, you really want to look at how all the access points are and all the streets, because you don't really want to require retail on anything but the main sections, the main sections of two main thoroughfares. Otherwise, it may not get leased. I have put together with ICSC suggested criteria for future retail design and mixed-use projects. And Leslie did look at this before it got on the screen, so it has, you know, I'm not being too controversial about it. But some of the suggested criteria, and again, ICSC is working with this criteria across the country and suggesting cities across the country consider using these, this design criteria. Do not require retail be built on every project. It's not going to get leased. We don't have the same number of retailers that we did 20 years ago, and retail needs to be at the proper locations. We need to reduce a little bit of our retail square footage, so again, putting retail at the bottom of every mixed-use project, you're going to end up with non-leased spaces. We talked about the design of the retail space and the depths. They're very specific, it can't be too short, it can't be too long. Requiring mixed-use developers to include venting for the retail spaces. We're asking cities consider this. The developers are not going to be happy about it, but it allows the retail spaces to be used by restaurants. Think about, here you have a mixed-use building that's all built, and you've got your residential units above, and you've got retail on the bottom, and a restaurant wants to go in. But according to health codes, they've got to have venting, and they've got to have a grease trap. There's no venting in those residential units. How do you then take the residential units that are already leased or owned, and, oh no, we've got to cut off this part of your wall, and we've got to put venting in? It's not going to happen. So that restaurant can't go in there. So again, asking developers to put venting in to the retail spaces ahead of time allows restaurants to look at the spaces and allows your spaces to be more leasable. Requiring mixed-use developers to install grease traps for the retail. Again, this is required by health codes. We need to have grease traps for the retail tenants, and putting them in ahead of time really helps get the spaces leased. Requiring that the retail space be designed with a ceiling clear height of at least 15 feet. So that means there's still another four feet to the top of the retail space, the ceiling. So again, that's for the, that extra four feet is for the venting and ducting. But the clear height of 15 feet, a lot of the new tenants coming on the market need that kind of clear height. Requiring at least two and a half stalls for every thousand square feet of retail space be built and be placed easily accessible to the retail space. So you don't want to have the retail parking a block away. The retail customers aren't going to be using that. It needs to be within the project, and it needs to have a minimum amount of retail space for the retail. And then, I mentioned the column spacing earlier, but requiring that column spacing be at least 20 feet apart from each other. That is a mistake in the slide. It says no more than 20 feet from each other. That was a mistake I did not catch earlier, but at least 20 feet from each other. Meaning that if you have beams every 10 and 15 feet, the retailers cannot merchandise within that space, and they really need the beams to be placed further apart. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
How about if we do this? This is a trick I learned. If you have a question, put your things sideways like this, so I'll know to call on you. And, all right, let's start with Shanti. Yeah, use the microphone, because it's going, it's actually live-streamed, so, and it has to be green.
Thank you. So I'm wondering, with this requirement of intersection and two main thoroughfares, are there exceptions for a street like El Camino that has considerable traffic and considerable visibility in terms of having some retail mid-block?
The city can make policies as to whatever they want. It does not necessarily mean the retailers will be interested in leasing it. Most of the way along El Camino Real, you have medians. Not all places, not all along El Camino, but in a lot of El Camino, you have medians. If there's no left turn into the space, and you have to go up and make a U-turn, that's less convenient. Oftentimes, there aren't U-turns for maybe two or three blocks, and a retailer will look at that and not go into the space. If it's an easy U-turn that's close by, normally in a place like Santa Clara, yes, they'd go into it. But in some other cities, they wouldn't.
Okay, Yuki.
I have several questions. So on El Camino, what's the typical form of leasing? Is it, and how does, how does the amount that the developer gets, or the owner, the landlord gets from the retail tenant compare with the residential? How does the economics work?
The economics are the square footage.
Okay.
Which one? I don't.
Square footage, I mean, what's the typical rent?
Oh, the typical rents will differ, and different developers go about it differently. So it has been in the past that a residential, mixed-use developer would not allocate any monies coming in from the retail space, because it's a leftover to them. They make most all their money on the residential units. But with the cost of construction going up like it's gone up in the last few years, that's changed, and they are looking at higher rents. So they'll look at the market and see what market rents are being paid in a shopping center that has good access, that has all the things that I might, that I mentioned that makes retail work well. And they'll place their rents at the same pricing that maybe another space works better for retail. What's interesting about market pricing, there's a market pricing for office rents, for residential rents, for industrial rents, and you can look at a geographic area, and you can identify what the market pricing is. You can't do that with retail. Retail is so specific about what, the site analysis and the site criteria is so specific that you could have one retail space here and another retail space a block away, and they could have drastically different rents because of the quality of the actual sites.
So it's negotiated with the retailer, then, on an individual basis?
All the tenants negotiate it with the developers, but the developers often will price it at a certain price.
And do they typically get a share of the revenue, the retailer's revenue, or is this strictly based on the rent, the lease?
The developer, well, I think you're asking about percentage rent, are you?
Well, I mean, do they, do they ask for a portion of the revenue that the retailer generates at that site, or?
That's called percentage rent, and some developers do. And that's a percentage of the sales. Some developers will ask for a percentage of the sales of the retailer over and above what the rent would equate to, basically. So if their rent is a certain amount, 6% of sales over what that rent would equate to as of 6%, it's a little complicated of a math, but yes, they can.
Does that happen on El Camino kind of area?
It does happen absolutely on the El Camino.
I see. And this is a more general question, but in a lot of cities, retail vacancy is a big issue, like in San Francisco, New York. What's the logic behind the landlord deciding to raise the rent at the risk of, you know, having that retailer go out of business or leave? I mean, and the place remaining vacant for years. It happens to a lot of places.
Let me address that in two answers. The first answer, why does a landlord raise the rent? Sometimes it's due to costs going up dramatically, costs of taxes, construction, improvements. All of those costs have gone up very much over the last five years. It can be greed. I mean, we don't know why a landlord, you know, it's different for every landlord, and then.
If the place remains vacant, you don't make anything, so what's the logic? It happens so often.
Sometimes, especially, like you might have heard, there's been ordinances passed recently in San Francisco and San Jose where they're now charging the landlord for space that remains vacant over a certain amount of time. Sometimes those spaces are not able to be leased, they're designed wrong. Sometimes the buildings need earthquake retrofit, and the landlords have no capacity to pay for that earthquake retrofit. And in many cases, if he has an empty space in the bottom of his building, he can't get a loan. So sometimes it's not because the landlord chooses to have it vacant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Steve.
Just a quick question on the, like, grease traps and ventilation. Approximately, how much does that add to the cost of some of the retail that we're looking at for El Camino?
How much does venting and grease traps add to the cost of the development of a mixed-use development? Is that your question?
Correct.
That's a Jerry Kaiser answer. I don't know, I'd have to do a little investigation, but I don't know at this time. I do know that for a retailer, a standard grease trap of about 1,500 gallons runs $40,000 to $60,000. And venting, now again, for a 2,400-square-foot restaurant, they would be paying, you know, $50,000 to $60,000 for a grease trap, and probably $30,000 to $40,000 for the venting. So just those two things for a small restaurant of 22, 2,400 feet could be $100,000. And then, when you add on the water districts and the connection fees that are being charged right now, it puts these poor restaurants where they can't feasibly do anything. So it's a real interesting challenge right now.
And when we mention like grease traps, are we talking even like Starbucks having a grease trap?
Oh, Starbucks absolutely has a grease trap. And they probably, I mean, there's a type of grease trap that's, that is about $3,000 that you can use underneath the counter, and some small restaurants can get away with that. I don't think Starbucks can. I'm sure Starbucks has to put in their, well, more of a full-size grease trap, because they use a lot of milk product.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Salem.
So I have kind of a comment more than a question. I've heard it before where people assume that autonomous cars or Uber is actually going to lessen the need for parking. I actually have been doing some research, and I will be going to a seminar soon about some of that. They don't reduce parking. So we shouldn't assume that when the technology improves, we can cut back on our need for parking. Otherwise, autonomous cars tend, once they've dropped their passenger off, if there isn't parking, they'll go wander the streets like orphans, just like, you know, a car with a person that can't find a parking space. So let's make sure that we don't ignore that. Thanks.
I 100% agree with you. In theory, it seems like we have a less need for parking, but in reality and what's really happening, we still need parking. So I appreciate your comment.
Howard.
Thank you. First of all, I'm not sure who it was that decided to invite you, but I'll give that person two grades. An A for inviting you and an F for waiting until the very end. Because this is really good information, we would have liked to have had early, early on. The question I had was, how do you calculate hotels in this retail scenario?
How do hotels, how does retail do at the bottom of hotels?
Well, no. I would say hotel is considered retail, correct?
Not really. We don't consider, in the ICSC standard, we don't consider a hotel retail. We consider a hotel hotel. And hotels are great, and you want them along the El Camino Real, and whether they have retail on the ground floor or not, it doesn't matter. Hotels bring in great tax into the city, and in Santa Clara, you need them.
Yeah. And yeah, the thing, the argument we've been making on that is that hotel also impacts the neighborhoods less than apartments. But yeah, so it's win, everybody wins except the developer. Thank you.
Okay, Richard.
That design criteria is really great. Hopefully, these developers are looking, looking to this kind of information. It would save them a lot of money as well. Nothing like building a bill. Nothing like building a building that's really not functional. The other thing is, when we're looking at this whole, you know, El Camino plan, this is over the next, you know, long time, you know? And so this is a snapshot now. You know, how do we fold in the future? Because, you know, I got a feeling things are going to get less, maybe come back a little bit. You know, there's going to be variations. And then, you know, maybe nobody will ever leave their home again. You will never know. But, you know, right now, we still have to plan this thing for the long term.
So that's why you guys get paid the big bucks. So it is, it's a challenge because you have to look out 20 years for your city or more. And so all I can tell you is, we make guesses in some of this. My guess, and again, I'm basing it off reading ferociously economic studies about retail this and hearing from the retailers. We got over-retailed in America. So we have more retail per capita than any other country in the world. We probably know that. We probably need to get rid of some of the retail space in the country. We're lucky in the Bay Area because we're not, you know, the retail space in the Bay Area is always going to get leased. Now, one thing that I have been working with cities on a lot is, we don't want to give up on retail and just zone everything for residential and forget about retail and think it's going away because it's, it's not. It's just changing. We need to reduce the square footage a little bit and focus retail at the, the A sites. If you put retail very focused with, throughout your city or on the El Camino Real, it will get leased. It'll stay healthy, it'll stay vital, and that's what your constituents want. They want vital, good, community goods and services that they can use for the next 20 years. So I think it's not quite a science, but again, you don't want too much retail. You want to keep it focused at the, at main intersections as much as possible. And you want to make certain that it's designed properly. If you do that, I think you're fine for the next 20 years. Oh, and lastly, the, the one thing that you do need to, to think about, and I didn't really touch on this much tonight, but we're, the mixed-use projects that are really getting built everywhere in the Bay Area, they don't accommodate anchor tenants. Let me explain the verbiage. A shop tenant is a small tenant. Think about Starbucks. Starbucks is a shop tenant. Starbucks or Pete's. Small, you know, 2,500 feet, et cetera. An anchor tenant would be a grocery store, Trader Joe's, Best Buy, Target. Those are anchor tenants. And you have to really think about where those anchor tenants are going to go in your community. Because if you zone the main, the good intersections, these main thoroughfares, you know, the intersection of main thoroughfares, and you zone it all for residential, you're never going to get those corners back for retail. So when there's the demand for retail, you can't rezone that retail. So you have to look at your main intersections and identify those for retail and hold those out for retail. And don't forget about your anchors. We need grocery stores. We do need grocery stores. We're going to get delivery of groceries, but I'm telling you, there's a lot of us that like to go in and fill our own produce and take our own produce home with us. So don't forget to save areas that are good sites for grocery stores and anchor tenants.
Can you mention how, how retail is changing? You know, El Camino has a lot of muffler shops, transmission shops, that kind of stuff. That's going to the wayside. But we really need, you know, those, those intimate services, like on your way home, hey, I need to stop and maybe get something to eat, you know? Whether it's a cafeteria or it's a little produce stand or a small market or a large market, there's certain things that are vital and certain things that really aren't. And I think somehow we have to categorize those. Otherwise, you know, we're talking about other things, not really the things we really need.
That's a really good point. And I don't think ICSC has a quality category of retailers like that. That's really up to every city to identify how they would want, how they qualify a retailer. Is an auto, I mean, we do it in zoning all the time. You know, you can put, you can't put auto, you can put, you can sell auto parts here, but you can't do auto repair here. I mean, we do that kind in, in city zoning. So I think that issue is a policy issue that has to be handled by your city staff and, and your politicians to figure out how you write your zoning document and your planning document. Because it is changing, but you still need to repair your car someplace. They just don't, shouldn't be on El Camino Real.
Okay, John Cordes.
So when we look at the vision for El Camino Real, we want a walkable, bikeable, pedestrian-friendly community. And so for a lot of us, we think that eventually it's going to end up as a paseo of some kind or a lot more of it will be sale. Maybe it's got one lane, the car is still going up and down the middle so people can look at shops. What does it take as far as retail and people density to get to the point where you can just shut the road down and make it a paseo?
That's not going to happen. Are you talking about the El Camino Real?
I'm talking about any street in Santa Clara. I mean, you know, the, the problem statement's the same, right? How much density do you need before you can start closing a street down and saying it's just people on walking, biking? Maybe there's a trolley that goes down the middle of the block, but we don't have to allocate three lanes of cars anymore.
So what, what I've seen cities do is that they'll look at this main street, like El Camino Real. There's other streets like this in other parts of the Bay Area. They look at the main street and know that until something drastic happens in our society and our culture, we're still going to be using cars and we do need cars to get around. So, but they want that paseo, that paseo feel and that walkable intimate environment. And so what we're recommending to cities is you look at a street right off that runs parallel oftentimes to the main street. And you can build that paseo there. But what's challenging with retail is, remember, I like to say that retail, they like co-tenancy, they like to be with other retailers. So you have to make certain that you get that paseo going with a group of retailers at the same time. One by itself isn't going to make the paseo and it will, it won't survive. The density, it differs from city to city. I mean, some cities have been able to really put a paseo together that don't have the density of, of Santa Clara. So you, you're going to have to look at your whole city and where your retail is. The related project that's coming in is going to suck a lot of the retail tenants to that. So you really are going to need to look at your city as a whole because retail is holistic. It's how we shop. It's, it's human behavior. And so we need to look at the city holistically and look at where all the retail is and where we could place something like that. Yes?
If I could just editorialize or bring it back to the planned concepts we've shown so far, we have thought that there are some of these large focused activity centers where maybe there's, you know, three or four spots along the El Camino where there's a large development site. And if we're going to have this focused area where we really try to get a beautiful little main street environment going or paseo going on a focused block or two, it could happen in some of those large development sites where we can do it all at once, really focus the energy. And so there might be a few key spots where we really try to do that to get it going. And then maybe from there, it could spread to other places. But I think Christine's point is to really focus that effort because it probably won't happen for four straight miles all at once, you know? There'll be these little, little spots where we can kind of nurture it along and then, and then go from there.
Okay. I'm looking at the report, the agenda here. And what it says is that, my understanding was that you were going to talk about three typical study sites. Study site number one, Monroe Street, which is .35 acres. Study site number two, Calabasas Boulevard, Boulevard, 2.45 acres. And Moonlight Center, 14.4 acres. So how is retail differed depending on the lot size?
I think that was under Jerry's scope, Mr. Kaiser's scope of work and-
I think he's asking a broader question, Christine.
Okay.
I think you could answer to it. I think he's asking about how does the retail want to vary and why does it need to vary depending on the site size that's available? I think he's asking that is the question he's really asking.
Yeah, I mean, partly, I mean, I look at, you know, Valley Fair, they put a billion dollars into that development. And it's, you know, I compare like Stanford Shopping Center, which is in the middle of Menlo Park and Stanford and Woodside and very tony areas. And then we have, you know, Valley Fair in the middle of San Jose and Santa Clara, which is not the same demographics. As you said, you were talking about trade area demographics analytics. And yet, that's one of the most successful shopping malls in California.
A regional mall, and by the way, that is probably the most success, well, in Northern California, it is the most successful shopping area. Shop, different types of retail can go all together with each other. A regional mall like Valley Fair, that pulls from 30, 40 miles. So some tenants you'll find at Valley Fair, you're not going to find again until you, maybe at Stanford, sometimes not until San Francisco or out to Walnut Creek. So again, some of the tenants will look at the Bay Area and say, I can locate one or two stores in the Bay Area and they'll go to a Valley Fair. So Valley Fair looks at a 30-mile demographic, not a one-mile demographic. So different size of developments look at different pulls. So remember, I mentioned something about the, the co-tenancy and retail synergy? The more retailers, strong retailers you get together, the more synergy they create. The more synergy they create, the bigger draw they have. Does that answer your question?
So how does the size, would a 14.4 acre development be a regional draw?
No, it's not a regional draw. Do you remember that one slide I have where we had the defined topology? So a 14-acre center is typically the size of a neighborhood shopping center. And so it will only draw neighborhood-type tenants. A community center is larger typically of maybe 30 to 40 acres and that will draw a different type of tenant. So it's not science, it's not specific like that anymore, but typically a 14-acre site, I'm going to back up a minute. A 14-acre site, depending upon how you design it, can draw from a larger distance, but we still wouldn't call it a regional center. A regional center is more like a mall. But the, the, it really depends upon who the tenants are as to how far it will pull.
Do you know how big San Antonio Shopping Center is in terms of acres?
I'm sorry, I didn't-
The San Antonio Shopping Center in Palo Alto, Mountain View?
Mountain View?
Yeah.
It originally, before they added, they added a back street to it. So that probably was 30 acres before they did that?
Okay, because that seems to be a regional draw. Anyway, okay. Mr. Kim?
Sorry about that. Yeah, well done. Thank you. And two questions. First, is there any much problem making a lot of U-turns so that we can overcome the intersection issue that you've been mentioning?
In Santa Clara, you're very, very lucky because Santa Clara has some of the best demographics probably in the Bay Area. So if a tenant were going to make an exception, they would make an exception for it in Santa Clara. And it will, it will depend upon the retail tenant looking at the site and making a determination about what kind of sales they can do out of that site. And they will look at all of it. They will look at who, what, what other tenants are there. They will look at the access. They will look at the parking. They will look at the design. They'll look at the signage. They'll look at all of those things and then they figure out, they put all those into an analytic model and they figure out what kind of sales volumes they'll do. And if they're going to do a high volume, they will overlook something like a U-turn.
You know, where is it developers' job to tell city planner about the U-turn, what have you, because they're the ones that has a vision as to what kind of little mall or whatever the setup may be to attract the, the shoppers. And so, because you don't know until developer has a plan as to what kind of a small little retailers that they're targeting for, city wouldn't know because, you know, what kind of U-turn that they're going to need and how frequent it is. That's my understanding. Am I correct on that?
Well, what, what we're seeing is that because of costs, a retail developer cannot really build retail by itself. So where the retail is getting built, other than like a related or something where you've got these huge masses of development and they can create so much square footage that they can bring in, you know, hundreds and hundreds of retailers. But what you'll see along the El Camino Real, the retail is typically getting built in mixed-use projects. The mixed-use developer does not know about retail. That's not his, that's not his profession. His profession is the residential units. He knows how to develop those very well. He knows how to make them most efficient. He knows how to design them properly. He doesn't know about the retail.
Well, next question, a simple one. I saw those island, one of your chart shows that the small shops and parkings and what have you and signage and et cetera, et cetera. What about these buildings already built, like near Lincoln, right out to El Camino? And basically is a straight like St. Petersburg building, second, third floor, I believe it's got to be a residence and then below, street level is, can't say a word, the ground level is the retail. Is that the way the future of El Camino will be or is it going to be more like what you presented, like, like for example, Moonlight Shopping Mall is sunk in and, you know, the shoppers can actually drive into park and then leave the vehicle there and to shop and come back and et cetera. Have I made my question clear to you or are these residential development? What I see, like a very Italian Tuscan style is very attractive, but is it, is that the way it's going to be El Camino in the future?
Right now in development, the money is in the residential or the office. In hotels also, but it's a little bit less profitable and there's no money in building a retail shopping center. You can't make a profit and you can't even often get it leased to pay for the cost that it, it costs to build it. So I think what you'll see is what is profitable and it is then the development will be based on the size. So different sizes will basically put out different types of development and how they can squeeze so many units or how much square footage of office on it. So it's, retail is very challenging because it's so specific. It's very, very hard to plan for it because it, it really differs so much from, you know, all that criteria has to be applied to find out if the site's really going to work for retail. And residential developers often don't think about the retail as much as they do the residential.
Let me just add, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. As the, the density of development occurs, the price of the land goes up. And as the price of the land goes up, it makes it, as Christine just said, very difficult if not impossible to just do one level of retail without doing a higher density use. Typically, right now, it's happening with, on the El Camino, you can see it's primarily residential is that high-density use that's making the economics work for the developer.
Okay, Mr. Reed?
Yes, I have two questions. I think the first one is related to the discussion that we're having. I understand the challenges of mixed-use development. So I'm wondering from your experience- So I'm wondering from your experience, if there are models that make it work? And I'm thinking in terms of the planning process and in terms of the city's engagement with the development process. So I'm envisioning one solution in which somebody, business association, the city plays matchmaker and tries to figure out how to get the development to work even though the expertise isn't necessarily there in the residential developers. And then another approach might be to, to really plan the spaces in a way that require a certain kind of responsiveness that you might not otherwise get from the residential developers. And I'm wondering if there's a third way or if there's successes and where this is working to overcome what I, I see as a pretty central challenge.
I agree with you. I think it's a challenge. And I think cities, when redevelopment was taken away, cities don't have many tools. You have zoning. You don't have a lot other than that. And so, again, what, what I'm recommending to cities is that they do look at, you know, they identify the retail nodes or the activity centers as Aaron has, has talked about on the El Camino Real. You zone those with some definite retail requirements. You have design requirements on mixed use that make certain that it, that retail's going to have the best possibility of getting leased. And then you have design guidelines for the residential that, you know, make the product itself designed in a manner that is satisfactory to the community. It's not easy. And if there were a simple way to do it, people would be doing it. But it's, it's a big challenge.
Okay. My second question is, when I drive up and down El Camino right now in Santa Clara, I actually see lots of functioning small businesses. I see small supermarkets with full parking lots. I see, you know, retail that is kind of a one-off niche market. I see restaurants that are full oftentimes throughout the day. I think what you've been describing is how do we attract sort of national players? And I'm wondering if, is, is there any, how do you deal with the, the question of how to retain functioning businesses or to create space for that type of small business environment to thrive? Is that really a whole different discussion or are the basic economics the same?
No, they're not the same. And I think that what a city needs to do is you've got to do everything possible to preserve those independent businesses. They're, they're dying by the wayside, we're losing them because, I would say a lot because of costs. Costs go up to do, to open a business, costs are higher. The cost to build out business, I mean, I'm representing a couple of small retailers and I have one small men's barber shop, a barber shop. And it took him, you know, over half a million dollars to open his door. And he was going into an existing space and he didn't have anything specific to do in the space. It had a bathroom even. But between soft costs and the cost to just build out his own franchise required things, it took him over half a million dollars to get open. So you really need to do everything possible to take care of your small businesses and small tenants. The issue is when their leases come up, the landlord has a right to get the rent he wants. So how do you bridge that gap? We don't know. There's, there's, you can't tell the landlord they can't make a profit. But how do you make certain that your small businesses can pay these rents? You can't, you can't always. Now, there is one tool, I haven't talked to Aaron about it, but it's kind of controversial. So I'm not recommending it, okay? But it's something that you can look at. And that's zoning certain areas retail only. Now, that doesn't give you the density, but it brings the price of the land down. And oftentimes, your retailers then can afford the rents because there is no incentive for a landowner to, to kick that local business out and to build, you know, a residential tower because he can't go. It's not, it's too dense. Excuse me, it's not zoned for him. If you zone retail only, it does allow you to help preserve some of that. And maybe, and that certainly is a question to be talking to Aaron about and, and your planners about if that's something you want to do. I do think it's controversial in cities because property owners say, well, wait a minute. You know, why can't I go up? This guy over here is building, you know, he's making a hundred dollars a foot on his land and I'm going to be kept at twenty dollars a foot for my land because I'm at retail. So it can get controversial and complicated.
Well, just to add to that, Christine, and I do think, Aaron, that you were planning to look at that is whether or not in return for
Could you speak closer to the mic?
In return for increased densities, there could be an opportunity to make certain requirements of the developer in terms of, in effect subsidizing is really what will be required in order to allow that retail to thrive. So that's something, Aaron, I believe is one of our schedule to be taking a look at. You might want to comment, but I think that's my understanding.
So I have a follow-up question to Matthew's question. There's this big controversy over gentrification. What happens if you redevelop a site? How do you keep those businesses that were there viable during construction or, or to encourage, find another place for them to move? What kinds of tools do we have to keep businesses operating while a site is being redeveloped?
It's incredibly hard. I can tell you what the banks do because banks are licensed and they, you know, they have a very hard, you can't just relocate a bank to the next block. The banks require that the developer, you know, set up some kind of accommodation for them to operate out of while the, the site's under construction. But remember, we, a retailer opens up a store because of its location, because of its design, because of its signage. It's not, to relocate that retailer back into a new project, the retail has to be pretty similar to what he left. And he's not, the retailer typically is not used to paying the kind of rents that are required in, in newer spaces. So it's very complicated. And again, it's similar to what Jerry just spoke of. You might look at subsidization of your retail, but then that gets complicated because you need affordable housing to meet your RENA numbers. And so what gets subsidized? I mean, how do you choose? There's just not enough money to go around. There's just not.
Okay, Commissioner Biagini.
I have three things. One's kind of a comment. When you talk about the two major intersections, what it brings to mind to me is the argument back in the 50s about how you build Valley Fair, you kill downtown San Jose. And, you know, it kind of came to roost, okay? So it seems that if you have friends in Oakland or San Francisco and you can tell them how to get to a site with one or two turns, like Valley Fair, as opposed to getting to downtown San Jose, it's not one or two turns, you end up having a more, how do I want to say it, ripe site for, do you call it a retail commercial, a larger center? And if that's the criteria, wouldn't, I'm thinking that same way, how you tell somebody from other parts of the Bay Area to get to X, wouldn't that make Lawrence and El Camino, that area, a prime site more so than Moonlight Center or Monroe because the ability to get there is so much easier? That's part one.
Yes?
Okay, that was easy. I don't know if it's even available for that. Then there's a second question I have, and one more after that. What's the effect of on, on-street parking on El Camino? There is some of it now. There's on-street and there's just off-street. What effect does that have in attracting or maintaining retail, and I'm talking the smaller businesses?
A lot of cities look to on-street parking for the support, their parking support for retailers. And if you look at the, the criteria of two and a half stalls for every thousand square feet of retail, you'll realize that on-street parking really can't provide that. And then one of my big issues about on-street parking, especially on the El Camino Real, and I'm not saying do it in a way with it, I'm just saying, think about when the traffic's going quickly and you've got someone who wants to pull parallel into the street, this parking spot over here, and he stops traffic and everyone's screaming because you're trying to get home for dinner. And, you know, there's a little traffic jam because somebody's trying to pull in to a parking space that is on El Camino Real. So again, I don't say take, take it out, but it, it doesn't always support the retailer in the manner that
A retailer would.
Yeah. A retailer is going to look at that and discount it some. They're going to want to know where their customers can park without having to fight traffic and those types of things.
All right. And then the last one is kind of one-off a bit. But so, I heard you speak earlier about related city place, whatever they want to call it now, uptown, that's what I call it. That's going to become, odds seem, to be the retail center. Does that make those concerns about building a, rebuilding a historic downtown that much greater in terms of being an area that could attract retail?
That is a great question, and I'm really glad you brought that up. There is different types of retail. And just because you have a related project in town does not disqualify you from having a more historic downtown. Different retailers are going to be attracted to different types of locations. So yes, you can have a historic downtown and still have a related project because the retailers that go into those projects are different. Just like we talked about the retailers that go into Valley Fair, they're not going to be on, you know, on El Camino Real. You're not going to see those retailers specifically in a special location on El Camino Real. They like malls.
My only, if I could, just for one second, my only qualification on that, Christine, is that you can't do it everywhere. So it's really important for people to realize what you just said, I totally agree with. But you have to have it in your mind that you cannot put retail every place and expect it to continue to be successful. You have to be prepared to say, here's where I want to focus it. Here's where the market is telling me I have to focus it. Some combination of those. And that's reality. And don't try and do it everywhere or you will not succeed.
Now, that's understood, but I think what I was aiming at was it doesn't necessarily mean the death knell for anything in a quote unquote historic downtown. It just means you have to think about it differently to make sure you have the stuff in place that would be attractive. Doesn't matter how much you want certain retailers, you better have the stuff in place that's going to give those retailers the opportunity for success if that's what you're looking for. So it's not the death knell, it's just a different way of approaching it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dickens, Dixon.
So I'm still thinking about those in-between places that are not at those major intersections. And I'm still wanting to explore what else can we do in those areas besides cram as many housing units as possible in. So I'm wondering about commercial uses that are not retail. So I'm thinking about things like I see a big uptick in demand for preschool and after school and children's activities. I'm wondering about green space and open areas. I'm wondering, can you expand a little bit on hotels? You know, it doesn't, we don't have A and B choices, right? If we want this to be a place that attracts people to walk and bike, then we probably need something along El Camino besides, you know, three-story, straight-up housing. Otherwise, they're going to get in their cars and drive from activity center to activity center. So can you expand a little bit on what else can we be thinking about in terms of design possibilities in buildings?
I think that's probably a better question for Aaron. I specialize in retail, so I really wouldn't be as versed at some of the other uses that I don't encounter. But I think it is, you have to look at cities and areas of cities holistically, but you need the other uses. You want to be a full community, a full city. And I think that's why you're doing this plan, so you can figure out where those uses go. Aaron?
Yeah, I don't know if I have an answer exactly, but I think we have talked about that on the CAC, which is these other uses like childcare, you know, it might be something that doesn't just magically happen because the market demanded it. It might be something that takes more of an effort, as well as I think some of the retail uses even we're talking about might not magically happen if we don't make an effort. Jerry mentioned, you know, do we subsidize retail? Do we subsidize other types of uses? I think right now, what we've looked at in our structure is that maybe these activity centers where we would allow more density, more intensity, more development and be generating more value, if there's a place where we might, you know, demand retail for one, but maybe also demand or encourage other types of uses that might not just naturally happen other places. Open space, we've talked about, maybe that's a place where we could be more demanding about open space. So where we're allowing more intensity, if there is an opportunity to, you know, be subsidizing these other types of uses, that's probably where we'd, we'd be looking. So I think that's kind of the structure so far where I would see that fitting.
If I may follow up. Could you comment within your sphere of expertise within retail? Do you see an impact of green space, of open space, of trees? Do, how, how is that working these days?
How do the retailers look at that? It depends upon what kind of retailer it is. So if it's a restaurant, they like that very much. They like to be around a pleasant area because it brings people in and people want to hang out and they want to get something to eat and they want to grab a coffee and go sit in the sun. So that makes, they like that very much. If it's a dress store, it doesn't really make a difference. And so it really depends upon the type of retailer. I think restaurants and service tenants are more likely to enjoy that type of use next to them. We are seeing a lot of, as, as Jerry said in his presentation, we're seeing a lot of different uses start to come into retail space. Uses like dentist offices, chiropractors, a lot of medical. I just did a deal in one of my shopping centers with a pet hospital. And again, we had maybe a little, we had some space that wasn't great space in the shopping center, and so we decided to put a hospital, or a pet hospital in it. And it's going to do very well. So I, I think you can absolutely have different uses along the El Camino Real. I think with regard to parks and open space, it's just the question, how do you pay for it? How do you buy somebody's property and give him a fair price for his property, his or her property, and pay for the park? It, it's really that.
I'm going to add one more thing, just in terms of the, the topic of how do we add more value or add more opportunities with these really large sites? You've talked about the, the benefit of intersections, corner, corner locations. Some of these sites are large enough that perhaps it's possible to add a couple streets and create four blocks where there was one huge block that was, you know, twelve hundred feet by twelve hundred feet, which is not a very walkable size that's pleasant to walk, walk along. So maybe we cut that into two six hundred foot blocks and suddenly we have more corners, more cross streets. You know, I think there are ways in the design to actually make it a more attractive place to locate for a retailer and just more, more pleasant to be.
Okay, Commissioner Becker.
So I'm really glad that Christine brought up a lot about grocery stores. And as a millennial, I, the older I get, the more likely I want to go shop into a store because, like you said, you want to know what your quality of produce is. I've had times where I've ordered something on Amazon and you don't get the right thing and you have to wait three days to get it and you want it now. So I understand about that concept. But also being a millennial, I'm seeing through this history of Santa Clara is that we're dwindling on grocery stores. we're dwindling on grocery stores, and they're disappearing fast. I think we only have four I can name off the top of my head right now. And seeing, as you said, about, it's very controversial to designate areas retail. Is it, is grocery stores afraid to open around here? Because I've noticed that ideas like another grocery store on El Camino, a movie theater on El Camino, stuff like that, that's a big draw on a main drag, is not kind of going through. And I'm noticing that we're running out of space to put big things like this. And I see that downtown San Jose, for example, they had the Safeway down there, and that, remember when that opened up, what?
It's closed.
Yeah, it's closed. It opened years ago, and they're like, this is a big thing, and now it's going to close. Walgreens down the street closed. Everything keeps closing in these villages, or paseos, or something like that, that, are we reaching a point where, like, here on El Camino, that we could end up being without a grocery store if we start going more density? Are they afraid to just open grocery stores, period?
Grocery is an industry that, if you meet guys, and the guys or women in the grocery business, you might, they feel like they might be from the '70s, '80s, '90s. I mean, they're not, grocery is not an industry that is technologically savvy. I mean, it's just not. You go in and you fill your grapes and your apples, and you pick up your meat, and, you know, you don't necessarily order it online, although you can with Amazon. But you have the same situation that happens. So, I'm very concerned about grocery stores. We are creating, with densification, we are creating grocery deserts, and we're seeing it in Oakland and San Francisco, where the grocery stores, the buildings aren't set up for grocery stores. When Safeway opened that store, I've done a lot of work with Safeway, and when they opened that store, it was a really big thing in the Safeway hierarchy. And they talked about it a lot, and it was an experiment. And it didn't work. And it didn't work because it didn't have some of the basic criteria that a grocery store needs. There was a parking lot next to the grocery store that was used by the Safeway, and it was used by their customers. As soon as they lost that parking lot, and there was a new dense development there, their sales dropped, and they ultimately went out of business. Grocery is not dense. I mean, think about how many of us are going to take our carts and walk a block to a parking lot and put it in our car. We want that car right close so that we don't have to walk too far with the cart. Now, some people don't need to buy a big group of groceries, but there's some of us with kids that, and working full-time, we don't want to go grocery shop every day. We do it once a week. So, we put everything in the container and roll it out to the car. We need parking, we need certain types of configurations for the grocery stores. If we lose grocery, in 20 years, we're going to regret it. And our constituents are going to look at the policymakers at the time and say, why did you do that? Why didn't you save our grocery stores?
Well, I noticed another thing, too, with the grocery stores, is that, for example, Safeway and a few others around here, they were open 24 hours, and a lot of them now are cutting back to closing at 1:00. And then, I'm getting people like nurses and stuff like that are saying, hey, I like to do my shopping at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning when I'm off of my shift. Why is this changing? I go, I don't know. I don't know why. Maybe it's my, maybe it's employers' money.
It's a cost of employees. It's an employee cost. And so, that's an operational issue. We're seeing it all over the Bay Area, all kinds of retailers are. In fact, one of the things that you've, you may not know, but in the last five years, the kinds of retailers that were really active were restaurants. So, if you had a project that you had to get leased, you always could go find a quick-serve restaurant, not sit-down, but the quick-serve restaurants just really took off. They've stopped expanding in the Bay Area, not completely, but they've reduced down by 80% at least because of not only the cost of construction and the health cost, but the employee cost. They have a hard time finding employees because it's not tech salaries. It's lower than tech salaries, and people don't want to work for those salaries in the Bay Area. So, retailers are having a hard time because they don't pay tech salaries.
How many grocery stores do we realistically expect, and is there anything else that can affect them?
Okay, the question was, how many grocery stores can we realistically expect, and what do we do to attract them? So, old-school, but typically, a grocery store needs to have about 20,000 people to support a 40,000-foot grocery store. So, that would be 10,000 homes, probably, to support a 40,000-foot grocery store. And that's kind of the standard. 30,000 to 40,000 feet is what groceries go back and forth. Some go down to 20,000 feet, some go up to 50,000 feet. But if you plan for 30,000 to 40,000 feet for a grocery store, you're going to find a grocery store that can be accommodated in that. And they'll need about, to themselves, about 10,000 homes, little less, maybe 9,000 homes. So, then you look at your number of homes in Santa Clara, and you determine, are there grocery stores around the outskirts of Santa Clara? I mean, you have to look at it from trade area to trade area. And trade areas don't look at bound, city boundaries, they just look at trade areas. So, we'd have to do an analysis about where the grocery stores are, how big they are, how, what the sales are doing, where the sites are that are doing well, where the sites are not, where the holes are. And that analysis can be done. And then, you find a site, and you go out and go after a grocery store.
Okay, Mr. Myers.
Thank you. A couple of questions, first one is pretty quick. I've been an advocate for requiring ample parking, but requiring a certain percentage of it to be repurposable, to either more residential or retail, if and when the parking requirements are lessened, which we expect at some point. Now, I have been thinking, things I've read, that we don't think that it would be reasonable to repurpose parking if it's been designed to repurpose it to retail. Is that something you're familiar with, or was that really, because you're telling us a lot of things that we didn't know about these personally. I didn't know a lot of these things you're telling us about retail. And I'm wondering, is it actually?
Are you saying building retail in existing parking lots?
I'm saying, if they're going to make new parking garages, require a certain percentage of that to be built so it can be repurposed. This is fairly new. Last couple of years, there's been more and more of that happening. And I was wondering if you're familiar with that, and would it be reasonable to think that could be turned into retail if it was built correctly?
Built parking space converted to retail.
I haven't seen that, and it would take, the design for a parking garage is pretty different from the design of what you would need for retail. So, I think the cost might be prohibitive, but I don't know. I haven't.
Yeah, I know it's being done. I just wasn't sure if you were familiar with that concept. Anyway, the other one I had in mind was that, as we've been looking at this project, we've been presented with the idea that El Camino is going to be a walkable residential area with a lot of attractions, and what you're telling us tonight makes it seem like that's not really that practical. And it's not going to be a one big long paseo, where everybody walks from one end to the other, whatever. Anyway, just, the way it's being presented, your information you're giving us makes it seem to me like that's a lot less likely to be work, to be practical.
I think you're correct, and I don't mean to be negative, but retail square footage is shrinking, costs are going up. So, you're not going to have retail for miles and miles and miles on every single space. And if you plan for that, you'll have vacant spaces. So, what you need to do is really intensify and focus the areas that you want retail to go in, and design the spaces, and they will go in those areas. The walkable sections of El Camino Real will be probably walking in front of other uses with green spaces along there. But, again, the retail will be, will be together. And on, you know, on El Camino Real, it'll still be there, but it, you will not have the entire, miles and miles of retail along El Camino Real. There just isn't as many retail tenants. And that really is due to online shopping. We're getting a lot of products online.
So, I just want to, you know, we talk about retail, but I wish there were two words. One is the service-oriented retail versus the goods retail. And we always conflate the two. You know, I see that selling goods is being Amazonized, right? It's being eaten by Amazon. But the coffee shops, the dry cleaners, the dentists, all of those services, you know, we just lump everything into retail. And I think we need to distinguish that.
Well, we do in our industry. That's what we do. So, a retail, when we talk about retail in the International Council of Shopping Centers, we lump all of that in. Restaurants, hair salons, service tenants, those are all what we call retail. Now, what we're seeing is sneaking in now are new uses that are more medically oriented. And that's new for, you know, what we've seen, what we're seeing in retail, but that's coming in also. So, we're using that all, I'm using that all together.
But I wish there were two terms. One for the people that sell things, and the other one that people, that provide services. So, service retail versus goods retail, right? I wish there, we were using those.
You can separate it out like that, and certainly, I've seen zoning documents that do that.
Okay, very good. All right. We're going to try to wrap this up at about 8:00. So, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to go another five minutes with the commissioners and committee, and then we'll open it up to the public for about 15 minutes. So, Ms. Yamamoto.
So, I'm with Green Belt Alliance, excuse me, and we're an environmental organization.
Speak into the microphone, sorry. Just hold it, just hold it, yeah.
Okay. So, I'm Kyomi. I'm with Green Belt Alliance, and we're an environmental organization. We typically support neighborhood-serving mixed-use that would, you know, potentially reduce the need for residents to derive to the businesses that are there. So, I'm curious, given the proposed project, you know, the draft land use plan, and I appreciate the comment, you know, the tip, that you have to put retail where the market demands, what kind of retail do you foresee this project demanding?
Which project, specifically which project were you talking about?
You mean, within this plan area, we have our more intense activity centers where there's higher intensity development, we demand retail. We have in-between where we would perhaps allow a mix of retail or other, and then other spots where we would allow just lower-intensity residential in-between those areas. So, what sort of retail might come into those three different scales of areas?
Okay. So, in the, again, retail likes to be by other retail. So, in the intense activity centers, you'll get, you'll get the TJ Maxx, you'll get the grocery stores. Hopefully, there's space big enough to accommodate those kinds of tenants, and you'll get some of the smaller shops. Then, as you go into some of them, or the, I think you're calling them community.
Smaller parcels.
Smaller parcels in-between where they're not high-activity centers. You will get shop tenants in the mixed-use projects along the El Camino Real, again, at corners and, you know, hopefully sparse properly together so that it's, you don't just have one retailer here, and two blocks later, another retailer. But you'll get service tenants typically, lots of restaurants. But again, we're seeing restaurants not be able to open stores right now because of the costs. So, there's service, one of the other tenant categories that are real active right now is fitness. And that's here to stay. We're going to see fitness tenants expand continually. And so, fitness tenants are going into some of these mixed-use projects we're seeing. We're seeing pet servicing, you know, doggy daycares and kinds of things go into them. But each category of tenancy has rent thresholds that they can pay because of the kinds of money that they bring in. And so, it's really, you know, a doggy daycare can't go into a space that's charging $4 a foot. So, if you have a variety of spaces, you'll have a variety of tenants, because their rents, their ability to pay rent varies depending upon the kind of sales volumes they do out of the stores. Does that answer your question a little bit?
Okay, Commissioner Biagini.
Quick question about, and I'm not sure what category this falls into, but arts and museums and things of that nature. Is that more of a, for lack of a better way of categorizing this, is that more of a historic downtown kind of business as opposed to an ECR or a retail activity center?
Those kinds of businesses typically don't turn profits, and they need to be supported and subsidized. And so, those would be community benefits typically.
So, where?
And that is what's so magical and wonderful about planning, is that you get to kind of make those decisions. So, again, I don't specialize in art museums, but I do know that they want to be at community-type centers. They want to be where, like your beautiful park out here. I mean, you want those kinds of subsidized things normally at your community center, meaning your civic area.
Commissioner Kit?
I just wondered, part of why you might be asking is because there's the effort to do some planning around the downtown, the historic downtown, and there might be some choices that need to be made in terms of if you're pushing a certain character there versus here, and how to balance that.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think, like my previous issues, it has to look different from an uptown. And is that part of what the difference should look like? Is the arts and cultural type thing? Okay.
It's absolutely wonderful, and it brings to the, adds to the quality of life for your citizens. And with regard to retail, I mean, some retailers like to be around that, some retailers don't find that it increases sales. Remember, retailers are all about, how do I increase my sales? Whether they're selling a product or a service, they're still wanting to look to increase their sales. And they will look at their co-tenant. If it's a museum and it's bringing in people, they might love it. If it's an art gallery and it's not very busy, then they won't love it as much. So, again, it really depends. But the one thing in the planning process that I urge, retail can go, as long as you balance the retail out, it can go in different areas. It likes different types of categories of planning areas, if you will. Like I said, I don't think the retailers that are going to go into the related project are going to be the same kinds of retailers that go in your downtown. And the retailers that want to be in your downtown are not going to be able to go and want to go to the related project. So, I think it does seem to often break itself out naturally.
All right. So, like if you had something like a restaurant of Native American foods, a little café next to the Native American Museum, that's the type of thing that you're talking, the good marriage. Okay, thank you.
So, my quick question is, how do we move, we got a lot of great information, so my question is to the staff, how are we going to incorporate that into the plan that we're trying to implement? How's it going to work?
I could start quickly, which is, I've forced Christine to write a lot of this down on a list that we can incorporate into the design standards and guidelines in the plan itself. So, that's a starting point.
I mean, I think some of it is, we don't want to make the mistakes by not having the venting, and not having the high ceilings, and having the columns. So, those are the kinds of things we can impose to make sure we don't make these mistakes.
And I think it's worth it to also think about, you know, there are only few places where retail's going to be successful on El Camino, so how do we make, protect them? Because, I mean, at the intersection of Kylie and El Camino, this commission tried really hard to have retail, but we lost a lot of it. So, you know, we want to avoid that kind of situation.
So, I think we need to distinguish between, you know, at the activity centers, it's going to be goods retail, and along. gonna be goods retail. And along the El Camino, it's gonna be service retail. Restaurants and dry cleaners and coffee shops.
Yeah, but I mean, we're, we're losing a big supermarket there, so, you know, that's a loss to the community. And it is, I, I, after hearing this presentation, I'm very worried about the future of grocery, grocery, access to grocery stores. So I, I, I'm just trying to, I'd like to understand how we're gonna address those issues in working on this proposal.
So if you take a look at our land use designations that we've proposed, the purple area is our regional commercial land use designation, and that has a minimum commercial FAR. So that's sort of the space that we are preserving for those larger tenant spaces, and it is a required commercial.
Required commercial?
Yeah, yeah. So they can still do residential, but there is that minimum required that would still accommodate those larger tenant spaces.
So, and I think there's some flexibility within this framework where we think that at those purple activity centers, we would be more demanding about retail, we would require it. There's, you know, you could debate how much, how little. The other areas, we would be more flexible where it's a little more open. So we, I think we are trying to promote this idea of focusing the retail and focusing the retail intensity in these specific locations. So I think that's in the framework, but there are other things I've heard tonight, like, well, we need to, first of all, add the design standards and guidelines around the retail to make sure that it gets built right. We need to make sure that we're ensuring new retail in new projects, but also supporting and finding ways to make existing retail successful. And I think we've talked about that on the CAC, but maybe there are other ways to keep talking about the existing retail and making their life easier. I mean, there's some things we can do through city requirements, and there are other things we, we can't do if it's related to costs.
So what tools does the city have besides the zoning and the GP designation to protect these retail spaces? Because, you know, during the five years I've been on the commission, we've lost a lot of retail on El Camino.
The city doesn't have much. And it's a shame. It's, it's, it's hard. Again, there is, in some of those activity centers, I would recommend, again, after a proper grocery survey is done, that you do look at possibly the retail, not only is it required retail, but you have to, some areas are required to provide for anchor retail. And that's a whole different thing in a mixed-use project. It's completely different because anchor, well, think about a grocery store, they need delivery. And the problem with delivering to a grocery store is they normally get their deliveries in the middle of the night, and if you have residential above them, it can be challenging. So sometimes what we're seeing is we, the grocery store is actually one-story. There is parking on the grocery store. We've seen that a lot down and, along the peninsula. I think Safeway was one of the first to start that. Going underground is still very, very expensive, but parking on top of the grocery store works. Giving some parking, then taking the, the overflow parking into a garage, then putting the residential over some shop retail next to it. I mean, we're seeing that done a lot where the grocery store is still being accommodated on the site, but not necessarily in vertical mixed use. It's what we call horizontal mixed use. So you still have the mixture of uses accommodated on the site, but sometimes the vertical only goes over the shop spaces, which is much easier on design. Designing residential or office is much easier, but designing residential over an anchor tenant like a grocery store is very, very challenging. You lose about 20% of the residential units just by how you have to design for the grocery store. So you do get pushback from a developer because he doesn't wanna you lose those residential units. But it can be done. And again, it's, it's all about, it's all about your zoning, that's what you have. And so you have to really dig deeper into the zoning and think about it. You can't be too restrictive, but you can't be too flexible. So it, it, it's a terrible challenge for cities right now. But again, it's, while you're here and with the brain power in the rooms around our city offices, we're gonna have to solve these problems.
Okay, I'm gonna, sorry, committee members and commissioners, I'm gonna go to the public. If any member of the public has questions, please line up at the podium and ask your questions. I believe we also might have some questions from the, the cloud.
We do have two questions from-
Okay. So why don't we go to the people that are here, because they made the effort to come here. So please line up if you have questions. Okay, yep. It has to be green. Yeah, there you go.
Okay. I'm Martin Bell, and you were saying that retail loves intersections of boulevards. I'm wondering if our transportation issues might somehow, in some circumstances, make that a negative. If there's like too much traffic, that it makes it too difficult to manage. And I'm looking at the, the plan at Lawrence Square, we have a, what, an eight-lane expressway crossing a state highway. If there was no overpass there, say there was just a, a stoplight, would that cause you to say, scale back and say, you know, this is, there's too much at this intersection?
There absolutely can be too much traffic sometimes because we find that commuters use these big thoroughfares. And when I mentioned retail likes to be at two main intersections, it doesn't always envision the kinds of intersections that you have here in Santa Clara. I mean, that intersection is very, very impacted by commuters. So you're not getting any synergy between the corners because it's, there's too much, it's too big of an intersection. But it's still, the retailers like the convenience of being able to get there. And so they are okay with the overpass in the fact that as long as, it, it, it seems easy to customers, as long as it doesn't take away too much of their visibility from the surface street.
Actually, I was saying if there was no overpass, if it was just like a super overloaded intersection with a light.
I know it sounds masochistic, but retailers like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from people that are here? All right, we'll go to the cloud. Steve, I think you're fielding those questions.
Yeah. We have two questions, one on Facebook and one on YouTube. Just before the questions, general comments on Facebook, just, general comments stating just keeping retails on El Camino Real. El Camino Real is too dense, still having too much traffic jams, and we should focus in on more entertainment and recreational use along El Camino Real. So the first question is from Donna on Facebook, is what about using the, the retail in downtown? Just transferring retail from El Camino to downtown. And along with that, she gave suggestions on transferring people or retail from El Camino to downtown via autonomous trolleys.
I can't address the autonomous trolleys, but transferring the retail in, from El Camino Real to the downtown is possible. And I think that it's all a matter of cost and identifying which retailers, you know, the devil's in the detail, the, the devil's in the details with it in that how do you identify a retailer and choose them to go downtown and not another retailer? You gotta figure those things out, but it's absolutely doable to take retail off of El Camino Real because maybe it has gotten too busy, and it should be for some other uses, and put it in, in the downtown. Absolutely, it can be done.
Another question from the cloud?
Yeah. Well, this one is from Adam on YouTube. Can we require new mixed-use developments to build flexible designs that start out as housing and then convert it later into retail? I think there was a similar question, but was a garage converted to retail? This was this housing, then converted to retail.
I've seen that in a lot of cities where we call that live work, where the developer designed the retail really in an area that wasn't viable for retail. And so they converted it later to residential uses or live work. Trying to do it from residential to then build it to retail, the design items are just so drastically different, you can't, you can't really do that. So unless it's designed as retail to begin with, it's very hard to transfer a garage or a residential unit into the kind of retail space that's gonna get leased.
Related to that, I have a question. You had said that a grease trap was 40 to 60K and venting was 30 to 40K. Is that to retrofit a space, or is that if you design it upfront?
I, that's the cost of those items typically to go into a space, retrofitting, I guess you'd call it. I think it would be about the same, though, if you are putting it in a new space. Those numbers don't include the cost to build out or change something within a space to accommodate those. Those are really just the, more or less, the hard cost of those items.
Which means that if you build in the grease trap and the venting, you're burdening a residential with an extra 100K of costs for the option to convert it to retail later.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. So I think we have a few more minutes left. I'm gonna go to Richard.
Yeah, real quick, there's kind of a common thread. It seems like the only, the only people that are gonna occupy re, any of the groceries is gonna be like a giant, you know, Safeway, like the one at Rivermark, where sushi bar, bank, Starbucks. You know, maybe we need smaller ones. Look, look at New York, San Francisco, they got these little bodegas around where you can go in and grab some real food and go to your place. And, you know, there's also, you know, you, you step down to Trader Joe's, Sprouts, I mean, there's, there's all kinds. And I, it just doesn't seem like, I don't think you could even fit the Rivermark Safeway in moonlight. I mean, it's just giant. But, you know, I mean, but we, we need probably more of them than just these giant mega centers. We have Costco. You know, it's nice to have little places you can go and variety and what have you. And, and it's the same thing with these little restaurants. So it seems like only Fortune 500 companies are gonna be able to have, have any kind of businesses on the El Camino, because we have some great little restaurants. I mean, they're world-renowned, but they're, they're in an Old Winchell's Donuts or something like that. So what, you know, I guess we just have to keep going to the outskirts to get like real, or like little mom-and-pop stuff. But the, the, the real question is, how do they do it in, in New York City? How could you have a little bodega and a little, you know, little things like that and make, and they make a living?
Density of people. What is the, what is the population of New York City? 15 million?
Right.
But look at the Bay Area, we're seven and a half million in the entire Bay Area. It's just a vastly different density issue. New York is really a very walkable city, and you can live on, you know, five, seven city blocks and do all of your shopping. That's not, we're not that urban. We're not that dense. And so addressing the Sprouts question, Sprouts is about 30,000 feet. And Trader Joe's is about 15,000 feet. So again, I'm absolutely supporting that size. The 65,000-foot Safeway at Rivermark, you don't need. And, and Safeway's not even doing those stores anymore, I don't think. So, I mean, you want that sprout-sized kinds of tenants. When you go down to the Trader Joe's size of 15,000 feet, there's very few tenants that are that size. So when I mentioned you wanna build 30,000 to 40,000-foot spaces, that will allow the most amount of grocery stores to consider that space. Most of the grocery stores are somewhere within 25,000 to 40,000 feet. And so, but yes, those are the kind I'm talking about. You want those in your town.
Okay, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. So I'm trying to get all the pieces together. You started off saying retail was really hard, mixed use is what was working in the market. And then we talked about how the only way to attract retail is to have a kind of a site control that's really a challenge in a mixed-use space. So it, it seemed to me that at the bottom line, density in a mixed-use space was really important for the economics of how it was possible to provide retail opportunities in those spaces. That at this point, the residential is really driving the capacity of developers to provide retail in mixed-use spaces. Is that correct?
I don't, if I understand your question, I don't think so. They can provide density without the retail. And the retail needs more than just the residential units above them to typically make a profit. But the one thing you said in the beginning, that you're trying to piece all these things together, I'm really glad that retail is incredibly complicated. And that's why it's so often done wrong, is because it's incredibly complicated. And there's so many different pieces that have to be brought in. I mean, I've been doing this 30 years, and I still find out new things about it. So it is not easy to just listen to an hour of information and, and try to get it all. It's incredibly complicated.
Can I just follow up really quickly?
Yep.
We, one of the members of the advisory committee is actually from the Building Industry Association. And he said to us, if you want retail, you have to have residential density to support the retail. And we've sort of been going back and forth as a committee of, we want retail, we're afraid of housing, or we want more housing, but we wanna be able to create walkable spaces.
So his comment is very black and white, and retail's not black and white. So there's a certain kind of retail that is, can be built at the bottom of a dense development. But again, you're talking about all different kinds of retail. That's only one. That's a shop space at the bottom of a residential tower. From what I'm hearing, you want all different kinds of organic retail. You want local restaurateurs, you want national restaurants, you want national fashion tenants, you want local fashion tenants. You, you want a lot of different types of retail, and they all belong in a different type of setting. Does that make sense? And so density-
Let me offer this up. I think it depends also on location. If you're talking about on the El Camino where land values have now moved up to a point, you really need, in my judgment, you will need the residential density in order to make the economics of, of retail work. Because the retail itself is not gonna produce sufficient revenues. If you're in Old Town or, you know, downtown area, you have a different set of economics, a different set of numbers that go into the equation. There, I think you have a better chance to do what Christine is talking about. So it, it is gonna be location-sensitive, is my bottom line.
Okay, Ms. Dixon.
I've just been thinking about the fact that we have some wonderful and specific demographics in Santa Clara. So we have, I live in Little Korea, I think it's called that, kind of unofficially. And then obviously, we have a major population from South Asia. So I see, they're the ones that I see using those little storefronts. And I'm wondering, A, does that, do certain populations support those little storefronts better than others? And B, if we redevelop El Camino, how do we avoid pricing out that entire sort of ethnic, commercial population? You know, in my neighborhood, you have a lot of grandparents walking the two blocks to the little tiny Korean market and getting just what they need for dinner and walking home. So I'm just wondering how that fits into the picture.
To your question, part A, yeah, my answer is yes. To your question, part B, as to how do you prevent- To your question, part B, as to how do you prevent those from going away, you have to zone, your only tool is zoning. Well, one of, the only tool in this case. And you really need to basically zone for those kinds of retail. And I don't know how to do it other than to zone retail only in some areas, because then you keep the price of the land down. There isn't a motivation to densify, because those little tenants are paying cheap rents, and they're not going to be able to afford rents in new projects. And so, again, I think it's looking at your city and identifying areas that maybe you do want to keep retail only for those purposes, because your ethnicity groups will shop differently. And they do support a lot of those tenants that, you know, other populations may not be.
Okay, we're going to end now. I would like Erin or Leslie to sort of summarize or wrap up, or next steps, or what, what do we do now?
Thank you. So our next steps is we'll be providing a summary of our conversation here, as we normally do for our community advisory committee meetings, and posting them on our website. Like Erin had said, we have some things to take back and look at as we're drafting the design guidelines and the standards in our specific plan, and we can follow up on these items at our next community advisory committee meeting, which we do not have a date for that meeting yet, but it will be posted on our website once we do. I don't know if there's anything.
Okay, so we're now going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to start the regular planning commission. I now call to order the planning commission meeting of June 12, 2019. Secretary, Commissioner Becker, would you please call the role?
Sure. Commissioners Salim, Commissioners Kelly, Commissioner Becker here, Commissioner Biogini.
Here.
Commissioner Jane.
Here.
Commissioner Ikezzi, and Commissioner Cherakuru.
Is there a motion to excuse Commissioners Ikezzi and Commissioner Cherakuru?
Motion.
Hey, made by Becker, seconded by Kelly. Oh, someone, we didn't get everyone. Is everyone joined? Let's see, Commissioner Kelly, are you?
Yeah, I'm joined.
I pressed.
I didn't even get a vote.
And Becker?
Pressed, yes.
Should we just revote? See if the technology is working? Motion by Becker, seconded by Kelly. I think I had this problem before. There you go.
There it goes.
All right, that passes. Okay. All right, all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the Statement of Values.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and the will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
You may be seated. Okay, the hearing procedures are as follows. Public hearings are conducted by the chair in accordance with the following procedures. The chair of the commission directs all activity during the hearings. All comments shall be addressed to the commission. Any item on this agenda may be continued to a subsequent hearing. Applicants will be allotted up to 10 minutes to present and justify proposals. Following staff presentation of the item, other speakers will be given up to two minutes. The applicant is allotted up to five minutes for rebuttal of comments. No additional comments will be accepted upon the close of the public hearing, although the commission reserves the right to direct questions to any speaker on any matter. Special procedures, time limits may be applied to any items as prescribed by the chair. Appeal of commission actions must be filed within seven calendar days. Copies of the current agenda and staff reports for each of the items are available from the Planning Division office on the Friday afternoon preceding the meeting and available online. A copy of the agenda packet is located on the table near the entrance to the chambers. Are there any requests of applicants, the public, or the commission for a continuance or exception for any of the items on tonight's agenda? Okay. Okay, seeing none. The Planning Commission has seven members. Whenever the full commission is not present, applicants have the option to continue their item to another meeting. Seeing that there are four members up here. Five, sorry, okay, so. All right, we're okay. So Commissioner Becker, will you please read the consent calendar for the record?
Absolutely. We have items 1A, which is Planning Commission meeting minutes of May 22, 2019. We have item 1B, which is the action on use permit for ABC license type 47 and outdoor seating for Bloom Restaurant located at 202 Saratoga Avenue. And then we have item 1C, which is the 12-month review of a use permit on this onsite sale of consumption of alcohol, an ABC license type 47 in the Yellow Chili Restaurant located at 355 Monroe Street.
Okay, would any member of the public or the commission like to pull an item? Okay, I just had a comment for 1B. I believe that from what's in your packet to the new conditions, the conditions were modified. Is that correct? You have a copy of the new conditions?
Yes, Chair Jane, it was just pertaining to condition C5, and as the hours of operation, they were extended. So the revised condition should be in front of each of the commissioners.
Okay, I believe the concern was if you looked in the packet, the menu listed, it was just breakfast and lunch, but they want to extend the hours to 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Friday through Saturday. So it would include evening hours. So that's the only change. Is there a motion?
Motion.
To?
Approve the consent calendar.
Okay, made by Commissioner Becker, seconded by Commissioner Biagini. Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, we're on to the public hearing items. We have two public hearing items. Item number one, number, hearing item number two. I know we heard this before it was continued. Is there a staff presentation?
No, there is no staff presentations. It's a continuing item for architectural facade and some sustainable measures. Clarifications from the applicant, the applicant has the presentations for you, and staff can answer any questions you may have.
Okay. So this, I have some questions for staff. I had suggested that the hours of construction be extended because this development is not within 300 feet of any residential development. It means that the developer is able to work 24/7 every day of the week, Mondays through Sundays, with the exception of pile driving, and not on holidays. But other than that, the construction is permitted essentially 24/7, 365. So. So would, I guess, are there any questions of staff? Okay, would the applicant like to present?
Our civil engineer, Ken from Maloney Associates, so if you have any questions on civil engineering, he can take those up with us. What we want to do is maybe take a step back and give you a little introduction on what the Cambria Hotel is, a little bit of the DNA about Cambria. We tried to hand out a little bit of how we created this project. So that was the little flyer that I think you may have just gotten. Yes, that's it. So with every Cambria that we develop, they're all very unique, and they're all specific to that location. So maybe Andrew, you want to talk about the DNA of Cambrias? And then maybe I'll jump back in and go through the changes we made to the plans to further enhance the architecture.
So the development we put together is specific for Santa Clara. I think what I want to convey is Cambria Hotels is part of the three-star flag within Choice Hotels. Choice Hotels is the third-largest lodging company in the United States with approximately 7,000 hotels. It's, if you think the big three would be Marriott-Starwood, which is one company, Hilton, and Choice with Cambria. The exciting part for us over the last three years, starting from the East Coast, there's at this point about 38 Cambrias opened, another 50 in development, and another 55 that will be open in the next 18 months. This will be Santa Clara number 122 in the Cambria chain. Why this matters is you're bringing more visitors to, with Choice loyalty member awards that are tied to a separate brand, that are focused on more of a lifestyle boutique, kind of focused on travelers that have one thing in common. They like good design, they like a narrative that tells them what's special about Santa Clara in their building, and none of them have a lot of time. Meaning they want to walk into hotel, and that's why David and I, as developers, we like working with a franchise company or a hotel company that allows us to design a specific hotel to our market. Travelers want to feel like they're in the living room of Santa Clara. So the books that we've given you just identifies who's our traveler profile. It's alumni, young travelers, people that are coming down for a weekend. We've created a really exciting differentiator in this particular project. We're giving larger rooms. Like, the trend has always been, let's go small rooms, great amenities. We're saying, let's get great amenities. You want people to walk into a lively communal space where they can be together, indoor/outdoor patio, take advantage of the climate. A lot of our travelers are coming in from the East Coast, or Austin, where it's hot and humid. They're coming to something exciting and different. But our hotel is designed to have all king beds. Why that matters, if you're traveling with kids, you're coming to a concert at 49 Stadium, guess what? Two rooms is expensive. And the little AC or another hotel that's very modern in design, I can't fit more than two people in the room. So the room depth and the room size is approximately 420, 450 square feet, which is 32 feet deep and about 13 feet wide. So it gives the ability of having a suite and in-house suite without paying for two rooms. Again, we're excited about the brand, we've worked hard, the, and thank you for your comments that we received, and I wanted to thank staff specifically, we've worked hard. It's our intention, we're long-term owners, we're the face, we're the neighbors. I mean, this is part of our home to us, and it matters how people feel and rate our stay, it really does. We're privileged to be in Santa Clara, we're excited about the project. We've worked hard to make some improvements on the elevation. I think we had mentioned this last time we got together in May. Design drives rate, travelers have choices. And travelers today, we're all trying to figure out what is their priority. And guess what? One box fits all. Millennials aren't into, you know, speak to the large brands that have been around, the Marriotts, the Macy's, the Harley-Davidsons. They're all shocked because people are no longer buying into the brand. They want a hotel that speaks to authenticity, that tells you something about the city you're in. So what we've tried is we've identified our travelers, we've identified what makes Santa Clara special, and we're trying to incorporate that into our plans, and just as importantly, into the exterior of the building. Dave, if you want to go through.
So Steve, if you want to maybe page forward. So this is really our marquee element, so this is really what all the pedestrians will see. We have a porticoche that's around to the left of the building, but that's a huge improvement, and I think this.
Button in the middle, yeah.
Yeah. So as far as, I think there's some comments regarding how, what the visibility is on the 101. Right now, you can kind of see the AC hotel that's right there, pretty prominent. It's an eight-story building, it's already constructed, we're behind it. So right where it says Cambria Hotels, that's exactly the footprint of our hotel. Take another one. The Embassy Suites is the one that you'll see basically off of Bowers, right? There, so if you're standing on the freeway, the 101, that's how much of our building you can see. We have the mature redwoods, which we're keeping, we think that's a huge part of the attraction to the site, so the redwoods stay. And we're really kind of tucked behind the AC hotel right now. We're a five-story building where the AC Marriott is seven stories, 91 feet versus the 59 feet that we're going to be. And again, we're really screened by the mature redwoods. We're having to remove a couple redwoods, but for most part, we're keeping as many as we can. I think four get removed and mitigated. So Andrew talked a little bit about the description and the design. You know, we're really trying to make this the living room of Santa Clara. The rooms are for the guests that come from out of town, and the lobby pool area is supposed to feel like Santa Clara. That's really what activates and keeps these hotels working for the long term. These are the updated renderings. You can see the tower element that wasn't there in the previous one, so we listened to your comments. There's also a lot of undulation on the elevation. We brought in stone materials, a lot of color blocking, a lot of shadow details. So I think that's going to really help. Again, we do have the mature redwoods, but all in all, we think it's a very attractive building. That's the other elevation, right? That's more on, that's coming, that's tannery as you're driving down towards Palo Alto Networks, and then you drive into our porticoche, which is on the left-hand side of the slide. Yeah, so then we made it very pedestrian in nature because we want people to kind of come into the main foyer, and we have a zipper glass panel that really makes it attractive. So we're trying to do an inward-facing project, so people want to come in, it's not outward-facing. We want people to wander into our hotel. We want them to use the lobby as their living room. These are some other renderings from the different elements. You can see in the lower left, that's our zipper glass, that's going to become a, we think people will really kind of like that. It has the meandering walkway, which is existing. Above it, that's the tower element, and we're trying to make it really pedestrian-oriented to activate the pedestrian. And then to the right and below is the, is a really new porticoche. It's elegant, it's tied to the building. We're trying to make this look timeless, so that when you come back to it in 10 years, like, it still feels really fresh and new. That would be a comparison. So when we came back here last month, the lower elevation was the one that we had previously. So if you go to the top elevation, you can see the changes we made to it. We sat down with the architect, we met with staff again. We just want to make sure that this was the right direction for the planning commission. And we think that the architect finally got it right on this pass. And again, that's the elevation on tannery. Lower one was the one that we previously came in with, and then above it is the one that we are currently proposing. Parking, I guess on parking, we want to make sure that we had all the EV parking that we needed by code, and the ability to expand if we needed to, so that we can put conduit. We think what's going to happen in a lot of markets, this one included, is that there'll be less cars that people actually take to the, I mean, I came here by one of these app car services, and so I think everybody's going to start doing that. It's a lot easier and a lot faster. So we're just showing you where on the parking deck that we propose for additional parking that would be EV serviced. There was also a comment that came up on solar. We want to make sure that we keep ourselves that option for it. So we're going to plumb for it, it's going to be solar-ready. We're doing that most on almost all our projects in California. We're not necessarily saying we're putting solar on today, but we want to have the option to put it on. One minute. Parking for the bicycles. I love what I saw when I walked in today, the bicycle master plan nears completion. This is perfect. So when I read that, I was like going, ah, now I know why this is a good, really important thing for our city. We're providing covered storage, which is under a ramp. It's under a ramp as goes to the second deck of parking, it's underneath and covered. How many are there in that number right there?
I think there's, in a way, bike lockers or spit.
15.
And then on the site, we've got 43 places to park your bike. 15 of which are bike locker, and then, you know, it's our goal, we'll have bikes as part of the, people like to come, they want to ride a bike over to. The bikes usually, they don't always come back, but we like having them. I mean, we're biased, we ride bikes.
Oh, here, here's the count. So we, total parking count, 43.
You can keep going. Go ahead.
Which includes, you know, our employee parking, and then 24, and 28 for guests and others. On a lot of our projects, I mean, we're actually building one in Napa, we're providing bikes. So we think that if we provide a bike service or our own private bikes, they're going to get used. People are going to use them and bring them back.
I'll sign the. Just speaking a little on the description of the project, bikes takes me to fitness, right? And the exciting part of hospitality, it used to be the fly, the brands would all say, if you just empty one room, take the furniture out and put the fitness equipment in, that's brand, that's okay. Brand gives us the ability to put, I think we've got a 1,700-square-foot gym. We spec it with Peloton bikes because guests travel and they want to feel tied, right? People want to come to Santa Clara, but they don't want to lose their habits. If that's jogging, riding their bikes, or feeling that they're in a fitness facility that's on par with LA Fitness, or City Center, or Equinox. And so when you look at the, and I think it was in your presentation, our fitness area is larger than most because we have the space for it, and our bias is, given the choice, if people have a moment to go for, you know, while they're traveling, to not always, right?
No, we want them to ride their bike over to Whole Foods, I would have done it today. Right? Nowhere to park. Yeah, was it Steve? So if there's any questions or anything that we can further elaborate on the brand, the DNA, how we created it, the site, its constraints. I saw some comments about, you know, the water and what we can do about water. With those mature redwoods, we've got to be very careful in the water we give them. So they don't survive when you give them reclaimed water, and that's just one of the facts. So even though we're plumbed for recycled water, we just can't use it on those redwoods, they won't survive. But with Cal Green and how we're building in California, our buildings are really almost lead silver just on how efficient they are. So when I go demo the site, we've got to recycle everything. So when I go build a site, it has to be done with all the Title 24, all the energy efficiency, all the water saving you can possibly find. And California's in the forefront because Andrew and I are doing projects in other states, and they all look to us, saying, these guys are the leaders. We'll make sure that we have smart lights so that in the evening times, we're not, you know, polluting the neighbors with, you know, ambient light, that it's just appropriate for our site. You know, and those are the things that we do anyways. On the sprinkler systems and the water systems we have for irrigation, they're all going to be tied to what's happening out in our ambient, right? So if it's raining, they're not running. I mean, that's just a, that's just smart, smart construction.
I think just in general is, yeah, our, this will be our fourth Cambria Hotel in the Bay Area. We're in Napa, we're south of Santa Rosa and Sonoma. These are projects that will open this year. It's a young brand, so again, there's a little, almost 40 that have opened, and another 100 projected to open over the next 18 months. We have a project under entitlement in Pleasant Hill adjacent to Walnut Creek. We love the Bay Area. My wife was born here, our mom went to school here. But more importantly, we think like long-term owners. These things matter to us because we stay in our own properties. We're not selling this to a large East Coast-based RE, which is a fine thing to do as well. But our goal really is, we treat these as our homes.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly, do you have any questions?
As far as like number of parking spaces for like EV charging, how many does the complex have?
I think currently, six will be installed. We have the ability to expand for another 17 that we'll wire for. And then we have another, and I'm going off memory, Steve, is it another 24 on the rooftop that in the future expansion can be converted? Do you think hospitality, or go ahead.
Okay, and then as far as like pickup and drop-off, would you expect?
Yeah, let's go back to site plan, I can find the site plan. No.
Go to the last slide.
The last slide, it has it? Yeah, we'll show you where the.
So there's, there's really two areas. On the large covered porticoche on the rains, then the days that it does rain. Bless you. You've got the large, you know, and the clearance, I think, is 20 feet. And so we've created, you know, I'll call it kind of a modular stoned, or I'm sorry, wood-treated porticoche. So that's when people come in. stone, or I'm sorry, wood-treated porticoche. So that's when people come in, they'll be able to either drop off or pick up there. But then as they come into the property, immediately, immediately to the right, or to the left, you have bikes, to the right, you have bike racks, and then you've got two places to park on the right. And the way of shared parking, we anticipate having a shuttle service, and that's next to the yellow square underneath the parking deck, where we'll have a shuttle service to get people to the game and to the airport.
Thank you. Commissioner Biagini.
Hi there. So could you go back to the difference in the exterior design?
To the one that's combined, there.
Yeah, bottom was last time. So it looks to me that the biggest difference basically was adding those, what do I want to call them? Onings? I don't know. Divisions on the tower. And I know you heard the concerns about the exterior design, but I'm struggling a bit here. How does the newer design speak Santa Clara to you?
Well, the whole, the whole building speaks
I know the whole building, but I'm talking exterior
Well, that's really the, that's the marquee, and it's, it's basically supposed to be a glass. Part of, part of what we try to do on our design is, we call it high-touch, high-tech. So when we see that, we're seeing a very clean, high-tech building. It has storefronts now, and those are the floor-to-ceiling glass rooms. Before, we didn't have that. We didn't have rooms that are floor-to-ceiling on that corner. And that's going to be
In the tower?
In the tower. And, and those, those rooms are now visible. Before, there's a couple trees, there are no of the mature redwoods in front of that. So you're, that's going to be a prominent element. And then that drives people to the lobby level with the zipper. So to us, that's a pedestrian action, activity. And that's where we're trying to get people to kind of come. Anybody who's going to walk to the property will enter through that gate. If they're driving, they're going to come around the porticoche.
Well, yeah, and I think they would have either way. Just my only comment on that is, I really don't see the type of design change that I would have liked to have seen on the exterior. Because I don't, it's not enough of a change from what the hope was last time when we discussed it. Thank you.
One of the, or go ahead. To David's comments on the high-tech meets high-touch, we're trying to use a natural palette. I'm not trying to put blues or colors that I think in three years, you'll say, wow, that was 1919, or 2019. I remember when that color was used. We're trying to stick to nat, a natural palette that ties with
Understood, understood. That's a paint issue. That's maybe not what I'm thinking of when I talk about design.
And in materials, we've created two large areas, I'll call them the, kind of a secondary tower element, that give us a bracket on the building that is a natural stone. And then to David's comment is, we've, we've worked hard to make the pedestrian with the meandering walkways and the mature redwoods, to almost give you a jewel box sense, like, I'd like to go inside. Why? Because I'm seeing glass, and within the glass, there's activity, which is that long stretch of undulating glass.
That wasn't there before?
It was
I guess I can't really see that difference between the two.
You'll see it in the lower, yeah, in the lower-left side, we've accentuated
Well, yeah, I see it there, but, okay, well.
I think it's our use of materials, and trying not to compete with our goals, that the mature redwoods will be there as part of the project.
Well, absolutely. I like the idea of the mature redwoods being there. But again, that's not the design of the exterior that, that has my concern. Thank you.
Okay. I, I like the changes. I like the addition of the glass. I like the addition of more stone. And I think, you know, it's a good effort. It's, I was just driving on Montague by the new hotel that's there, and decided that I don't like that project. So I think this is much better than what we had before. I do have some questions. Is, do you consider this to be a business or a vacation hotel?
That's a great question. I think we've got the STEM workers, right, that everybody, we're building, we're building in both markets. We have a downtown Austin project that I think is similar to Santa Clara in the sense that from Monday to Thursday, your rooms are very business-driven. The challenge in Santa Clara is, we all know the drivers, the universities, the live event venues. And that was one of the differentiators, is let's make larger rooms. Because when I travel with my family, I don't stay in an AC, I don't stay in a loft, I don't stay in most hotels, because as much as I like a small, smart room with a big TV, but I need two of them. And so I think we're trying to capture something that we think is a differentiator, which is larger rooms. So I guess we're working at this hotel work as a Monday to Thursday for most of our STEM travelers, and on the weekends for family.
So I, I would have liked to see the guitar music that you had proposed, and I was sad to see that it was removed from this, this project, even though in our packet, it's listed three times there. I, I was wondering, if you are going for the vacation market, sort of a resort-type market, will you be providing other amenities like massage, or spa therapies, or other types of things that, because I know we've been trying to relax our ordinances in that area?
And I think what we've done successfully on other projects is that we don't have an onsite spa facility. We have a pool and a jacuzzi, but oftentimes, we'll partner with someone who's providing those services, and we can bring them into the hotel. But it's not onsite. So
Yoga class.
Yeah. So we're doing the things, the things we can do onsite is that we can take some of our larger, the fitness room, some of the event space, and turn that into, you know, yoga studios, those type of things. And they'll be dual-use, dual-purpose rooms. We really think that our traveler likes the outdoor, so our pool design is very indoor-outdoor. So we're trying to make sure that, except for today, it was pretty hot. But most days, you know, indoor-outdoor living, we want people to go outside, the dapple light. A lot of people are sitting by pools, not necessarily swimming in pools, they're doing their work, they're catching up, they're enjoying the ambiance of it.
Specimen tree, do we show that?
Yeah, it's not on the plan. But we normally have a specimen tree that sits
The last one with the bike.
Sits in the middle of our amenity space. And that's where we Go the other way. There, that one right there.
I think that to David's comment is, when you look at the indoor-outdoor area, and obviously, our travelers are unaccustomed to what we think the best climate in the world is, having the ability to, nine, 10 months out of the year, to sit down in the open area, to sit down in, in the bar area, and then seamlessly through nano walls, walk out to the patio. What's not shown on this is a full hardscape and detailed landscape plan, which was, has been developed. In all of our properties, we're putting what I'll say, a signature specimen tree with dapple lighting on a patio, which is, I think, universal, either between sitting next to a fire pit, or next to, or underneath a tree, are two great ways to spend the afternoon. And so we always incorporate those into our patios.
Commissioner Salem.
Okay, so I was kind of in tune with Commissioner Biagini, that's that I was struggling to see the differences. That the tower was noticeable. I've never really been a fan of the prison guard tower design, though. It's not my favorite look for buildings. I was hoping to see something a little less, a little less that. One of the things I was most concerned about was the treatment of the severity of the blockishness of the body of the building. I was hoping you would find some way to smooth or to add more depth to the planes that you're breaking now, you know, depth in and out. But I understand the design is somewhat locked in. Do you have any more flexibility around that before the Architectural Design Committee looks at this?
So, yeah, obviously, we have, we haven't committed through ARC, so we have another chance to keep refining things, right? We're, we're building a type-five building on a senior-level podium. So that limits what we can build. It's made out of wood. Our neighbors are a concrete tower. So we're constrained with the construction type. But we think that, and we're also constrained by California OSHA laws. So for over 60 feet, for anything on it, they make us put cranes and elevators
Yeah, I understand.
Right? So what we're trying to do is, if you look at this elevation on the updated, you can see the previous, but I guess we've got to find the one that doesn't have a tree, because the trees are going to
You'll, you'll give map to before with the current.
Come on.
Yeah.
See, I think what we're looking at, to follow your, your descriptions a little bit, you've broken out the tower, you've given each floor some sense of identity, but that stops. The tower stands alone as the attempt to break up the blockishness of the building. Whereas all of the rest of the windows are a perfect grid on a flat surface, maybe carry something through to break up that, that severity. I know you even said severity is one of your design goals, but I'm not sure that that level of severity matches what our hopes are for Santa Clara. Anyway, that, that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. So seeing that there are no more questions, would any member of the public like to speak on this item? Is there a motion to close? Oh, you have five more minutes to rebut?
There's, there's no, there's nothing to rebut.
But they can, they have five minutes.
Well, no, so we look forward to working with the ARC to keep working on, on the building. Keep in mind, when you see an elevation of 600 feet long, nobody in real life sees 600 feet long, so it's, it's taken in pieces. And that's how, so when you see those, they may look a little more scary than they are. So we'll, we'll make sure we break it down into sections, and, and figure out how we can make the blocking look a little better. What we're trying to do is make it seem timeless. And so we don't want to get, we don't want to have design on there that might work for today, and then in 10 years, like, why did we do that? Or we hate that project, right? So we're really trying to be sensitive to that. And we want to make sure that what we do with stone, with the different materials, with the color blocking, it looks great forever. The one thing I'm seeing on hotels right now, they're, they're building in black, and guess what? What happens with the rain? It stains it. And like, I know they didn't want that to look like that, but it does. Right? So we're trying to be very, very smart on how we put them together. There is ways we can break up the elevation. I think when, that's, that's really what I think we can do, right?
Yeah, we always, we like a challenge. And so we're, and we really do mean it, that we'll continue to evolve the project, and we can continue to work with staff. You don't see it in the daytime, afternoon, but we try to create the different planes and templates and areas of the building. You can see there's a subtle light, without being too fanciful or animated or cartoonish. We try to create, you'll see that shadow line behind the trees where the difference, the lighter stucco goes to a darker stucco. That's envisioned that you'll have a nice line on both sides of the building. But again, I'm not trying to, like, for lack of a better word, make the building feel like ballast, or being a little too animated, but just a nice subtle, which we think is, everybody, a lot of people relate Santa Clara to obviously technology. But I don't want to be too, want to be authentic about it.
Okay. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Okay. Made by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Salem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I believe there are some commissioners who still have some questions. So Commissioner Kelly?
Questions? The projects with area?
Okay. Commissioner Biagini?
Hi there. So I did want to say that, and I don't think I did in my last comment, that is an improvement, okay, in terms of design, definitely. But to kind of follow through with what my colleague, Commissioner Salem, said, what I see is, the tower had a design element added, but it leaves, what, 95% of the rest of the building virtually unchanged. So that you will continue to work on that type of design. Timeless is one thing, but I'm trying to think of a nice way to say boring is another. And I think continuing to work with the Architectural Review Committee on some tweaks to the design for the rest of the building would be helpful. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Becker?
I have to agree a lot with Commissioner Biagini and Commissioner Salem on that, because, I mean, I kind of want to see something more signature. And I think that's something you guys are going to work through in the future on this. Like I, like they were saying, I mean, it just seems like a box, and then you have that little one tower area. I do like how the tower area does look. I mean, it's looking more appealing. But I'm looking at something that's going to be more long-term, and something that people are going to really remember around here in Santa Clara for a long time.
Okay. So I, I'm hoping that Architecture Review will see a slightly different project, or a slightly different design. I do have, I guess I would like to move to Does this work? Approve the, a use permit to allow a new 190-room hotel with onsite alcohol sales for the property located at 2,900 Lakeside Drive, Santa Clara, with the following changes. And I know these, these are not new, these are already in there, but I just want to add them to the conditions of approval. So in the text, I saw that, and you already described, that you were going to put in six electric vehicle chargers that are ready, turnkey-ready, and 17 additional spaces pre-wired. I would like that, to add that as condition EL23. So just to make sure that that's in the conditions of approval. So EL23 will say, parking accommodations include six electrical vehicle parking stalls that are turnkey-ready, and an additional, seven additional spaces. And then I would like to change E22 to say that there will be 28 bicycle parking spaces available in high-visible locations near both driveway entrances. I just want to make sure that that is codified there. And then I want to change condition 18 to state the following, which I believe staff and attorney have, but I'm going to read it here. Construction activity further than 300 feet from any occupied residence, with the exception of pile driving, and your, your project is not within 300 feet. So with the exception of pile driving, may take place at any time on any day, subject to the restrictions of SCC Chapter 19.10, Regulation of Noise and Vibration. Pile driving may take place only between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM weekdays, and is not permitted Saturdays, Sundays, and state/federal holidays. And then, this doesn't apply, but upon occupancy of residential units on the project site, construction activity not confined within a building within 300 feet of an occupied residential unit shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM weekdays, and limited to the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturdays, and prohibited on Sundays and state and federal holidays. So, and then, construction activity confined within a building within 300 feet, again, that doesn't apply, of an occupied residential unit shall be permitted during the hours of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM weekdays, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturdays. So I made that motion. Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Chair Jane, I would just recommend just including the first sentence, because the residential units are not applicable to this project.
So that, the first sentence, which includes, it basically goes until state and federal holidays, right?
Right.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Chair Jane?
Commissioner Salem?
Yeah, I'd like to ask if you're working our consideration Yeah, I'd like to ask if you're working hour consideration takes into account the fact there's other hotels nearby. So as you increase the hours of working, you're actually possibly kind of reckon the day for all the other...
But there are no hotels within 300 feet.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Yes, there are hotels. AC Hotel is next to this project, and then the Marriott is across the street.
I thought I looked at the map, and they were not within 300 feet.
AC Hotel is right next to this property.
Okay. So then, these, so then, these conditions then don't apply, because those are basically residential.
Those are not residential.
Oh, that's not what we consider. But then this will affect those businesses. So I guess we would, if you're sure that they're within 300 feet, then we'll just keep the, the conditions as stated already, C 18. Okay? So... It's whatever was written already there, C 18?
C 18, in the conditions of approval. C as in cat.
18, it's already in the packet. So we're just adding EL 23 and E 22. Okay? Related to EV charging and bicycle parking. Who, was there a second? Okay. All right. So please register your vote. Okay, passes unanimously. Congratulations. So there's no appeals, or there are appeals?
Yes, there are. There are appeals within seven days.
Okay. Appeals must be made in writing within seven days. Thank you. Okay. So next, we move on to... Okay.
Election of officers is the next item on the agenda.
Okay. So the second public hearing item is an election of the Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. These positions will take effect at the next Planning Commission meeting on July 24th. So the procedures for election of officers, commissioners can either nominate themselves, or you can ask members if they are interested in serving in any of the positions. Also, since the Vice Chair and Secretary serve only, since the Vice Chair and Secretary only served a few months, the normal seniority assumptions of these positions need not apply. So I guess it's a fresh start for everyone. So I guess we will start with the Chair. Are there any nominations? Okay. Commissioner Becker? You nominate yourself?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. So, wait, are there speakers? No. Okay. Okay, so we will vote on Commissioner Becker for Chair. Okay. Congratulations.
So you said we can nominate somebody or ask them if they would like to be nominated? Is that what you said for any of the other roles?
People can nominate themselves, or you can ask somebody else if they want to. So we're moving on to Vice Chair now.
So I would like to nominate Commissioner Salem.
For Vice Chair?
For Vice Chair, if he's interested.
Are any other nominations?
And, oh, sorry.
Secretary?
For Vice Chair? Okay, so you declined the nomination, so we, for Vice Chair. So now we will vote for Commissioner Salem.
Was there a second for that motion?
Second.
Do we need a second for that?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. Kelly? Okay. Congratulations. All right, now we move on.
Nominate Commissioner Biagini for Secretary?
Second.
Interested?
I'm interested.
Okay, very good. Seeing no other nominations. It was moved by Commissioner Becker, no, Salem, seconded by Becker. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. So we now have our new officers. So we'll move on to reports of Commission Board Liaison. So any announcements? Okay, seeing none. We have the APA Conference coming up in September. We have plenty of budget to send people if they want to go. Would you like to go?
Where's it at this year?
We have the Innovation Conference happening next week, on Wednesday.
Okay. So Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Becker are interested in attending the APA Conference. What was that, Santa Barbara? Yeah. And so I guess I would like to move that we reserve funds for sending three people, because I don't know if Commissioner Cherukuru would be interested in attending. So, so I would like to move that we approve funds to send three people to the APA Conference. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Biagini.
Yeah, we want to keep in mind Commissioner Casey might be interested, but she could be a third.
Three, yeah. It's in September. We could always vote to approve a fourth later. September. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, that passes. All right. And then there's an announcement that there's the Prospect Silicon Valley Innovation Conference. I think three of us are going, right? Okay. Board and committee assignments. I guess, oh. Oh, other announcements? Okay.
Yeah, I think this would probably be a good time to tell both staff and my fellow commissioners, that I will be out of the country from September 7th to the 22nd. This was set in motion last year with my family, so unfortunately, that coincides with the APA that I would have loved to have gone to. But I wanted to make sure you knew that well in advance. Okay?
I'll be out.
I don't know how that's gonna...
Right around that time, too.
Ooh.
Okay.
From the 19th to the 29th in September.
Okay.
I'm back on the 23rd, so...
Our next Planning Commission meeting is the 24th of July? Is that correct? Okay. So, all right. Board or committee assignments. So I guess now that we have officers...
We will have that agendized for the next...
Architecture Review?
Yes. Well, there will be a rotation, so we'll request that people consider if they can serve on that committee.
Yeah, okay.
For the time being, and so we have two new people.
Okay. But is that going to come up in front of council?
No. Oh, you mean the changes to the Architectural Committee? Yeah, it will, but for the time being, we still need to have that committee take effect, because we don't know the timing for the adoption, if there's going to be any change to the committee itself, based upon what the commission gave us feedback on. So we still need to have those positions. If by any chance they do go away, then those roles would just no longer, you know...
So when is the next ARC meeting?
It is June 19th.
June 19th.
Next Wednesday.
And I guess Commissioner Becker and Salem will continue?
Yes, and to, right.
Okay.
No, that's the, it coincides with the conference day, so...
Because, yeah, right. So we asked Commissioner Kelly via email whether you'd be able to attend on the 19th as an alternative.
Do I?
Alternative.
Oh, June. Next week.
June 19th.
Hold on. Problem? Yeah, I can do it.
Good. Okay. So I guess we've covered ARC and travel and training. Are there any, like, ICLI conferences or trainings coming up?
The, what kind of conferences?
Whatever. The Cities, whatever, League of Cities, or whatever it's called?
Um, we can look into the League of Cities or ULI trainings. I'm not aware of an ICLI training in the near future, but we can get you the dates, certainly for the new, there's the annual commissioner training that ULI puts together. So we can, we can provide you a date for that.
Yeah, because perhaps...
I'm sorry, that the League of Cities puts together.
League of Cities, yeah. I'd like to see that for the new commissioner. And then, okay, so now Director of Community Development reports.
So the only item that was on the last city council meeting that pertained to the Planning Commission is that there was an early consideration for the property at 2330 Monroe, and that's the parcel that the city owns, and there is an affordable housing project proposed there. There's currently an ENA with Free Bird for an affordable housing project of basically townhouse-style units. And this council did authorize continuation of the GPA, because it currently has a right-of-way designation, so it needs an actual land use designation for residential.
I would just also provide additional information. We did talk about an increased budget proposal, so the city council will consider a proposal by the city manager. The current budget for the Planning Commission for this fiscal year was $10,000. The proposed budget is $28,000 for the next fiscal year. This was derived by really finding the most relevant trainings that would also be efficient for the commissioners. So that $28,000 was developed by assuming commissioners attend the California APA Conference, the California Cities, I'm sorry, the League of Cities Planning Commissioner Academy, and then also have about $9,500 for miscellaneous training that could be used to bring trainings to you, or on other topics that you're all interested in.
So I really enjoyed the session today. I think it was very informative. Do you have any idea how much that cost us?
I can tell you that the retail specialist was $5,000, just for her to be here tonight. I don't know how much it was for our normal consultants who are already under contract with us. We're sort of moving budget around to incorporate it with the work they have already scoped to do.
Okay.
Should change careers.
He was very good. Yeah, so, you know, considering that we actually have projects that are in the billions of dollars, I'd say it's money well spent. And so, okay, so, but I would like to see, in the future, you know, some other opportunities for trainings similar to that. And we do have some budget for that, so I think I'd like to see that. Okay, upcoming agenda items.
So the commission will hear the continuation of the AC process change. It was brought forward on May 20th. The commission had some requested changes, and so we're going to bring back a revised resolution that reflects the changes that were presented by the commission. Also at that hearing, there's a, some other minor requests, a variance request on a accessory dwelling unit, a rezoning to single-family on Fremont Street, which was also brought earlier as part of a, an initiation request by the applicant. And I think there may be an ABC permit license as well. But hopefully tomorrow, not tomorrow, the next AC agenda will be fairly light.
The next AC agenda or PC agenda?
The next PC agenda.
Okay.
Be fairly light.
Okay. We may want to try to put in a little bit of training or education component to that. City Council actions? You just covered that, yeah. Okay. Pardon? You just covered that. Yeah. So move to adjourn?
Second.
Second, oh, one more thing? Okay.
So this is a follow-up from the April 10th Planning Commission hearing on the El Camino Real, or sorry, Planning Commission Study Session on the El Camino Real specific plan. The commission had a specific question about the building transition strategies. The diagrams that we provided were a little confusing to everyone. So just as a reminder, we started with this neighborhood transition diagram that showed you where properties on El Camino backed up to single-family homes versus backed up to multifamily homes versus where across the street from a residential use. And then from there, we developed our transition diagrams to provide privacy and sensitivity to those adjacent uses. So this was the diagram that you saw at the study session. And we did add the 45-degree angle down there at the property line, and we added a note that says that the 45-degree angle, when you're adjacent to single-family, is measured from the property line, so that's clear. And then the consultant did do a couple of other diagrams to hopefully help people kind of understand the different things that could happen within that 45-degree angle. So on the left, you have your, your single-family homes, and you have it transitioned to two-story homes to three-story up to five-story. So you can kind of see how within that 45-degree angle, new development could fit. And then on the right, you can see a different, less, less of a step-back of uses, more of a setback between a higher-density and lower-intensity use, still with that 45-degree angle from the property line. So there's a, probably about 25-foot setback between the property line and the new building before it hits the three-story height.
So if the residential is a two-story or a three-story already, you still have that 45-degree angle?
You do, yeah.
The ground?
Let's see.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
That seems...
So you can see on the, on the, on the ground on this one, I don't have it on the other diagram yet, but you can see where the tree is. We've, we've added the setback dimensions from the property line to the new building.
Yeah.
So for a three-story building, you know, you've got a 30-something-foot setback from the property line before you go up to three stories.
Yeah. I understand. But it just, it doesn't take into consideration the height of the residential building. Yeah, I understand, but it just, it doesn't take into consideration the height of the residential building.
The existing residential building, the existing single-family?
Yeah.
So, if, do you mean that if it was a two-story building, that it should be closer, or it should be farther because it's a one-story?
If it, if it were a two-story building, I think that the height of the, of the new development could be higher
Okay.
than if it was adjacent to a one-story. So, I'm kind of surprised it doesn't take into account the height of the residential.
Overall, you're looking at the massing of a much larger building, so that really the transition is needed because of the bridge and the housing type. You're looking at one unit versus if it's a podium-style, you might have an elevation that might run, you know, 200 feet long or 100 feet long before it's, there's a break. So, there's, there's a lot more impact to that massing than to a single unit. So, that's why traditionally, we use that same step-back, regardless of the form of the single-family. If you had multifamily, I think that would make more sense, but for a single-family, that's been an issue for most property owners, is just the feeling of the building being imposing.
Just a simple reminder, people actually live on their first floor mostly, so you don't want to really wreck their first-floor views with higher adjacent buildings. Even if they have a two-story home with bedrooms on the second floor or something, you're still considering it the home from the first floor.
Okay. But, you know, the thing about it to me is, again, you know, we had this issue where if you have a single family and you put a two-story next to it, right, you could have a single family, but next to it, not across from it. You could have a two-story, and it doesn't meet the 45-degree angle, right? Because you only have five-foot setbacks.
The two-story will, yeah. So, this, oh.
We require a 20-foot setback if it's going to single-family to single-family.
So, it'll still, the two-story, I mean, you could, you could pretend that those two top stories didn't exist. The two-story would come out to this, to this line right here.
But I'm saying
So, it would have a similar setback to this if this was two stories. They'd be, they'd match.
But what I'm saying is if you have two houses next door to each other.
Two single families.
Two single families. And if this next-door house is, if the next-door house is two stories, you only have a five-foot setback.
No.
From the side yard.
Are you talking side yard?
Oh, a side yard, okay.
Yeah, and then you don't meet that 45-degree from the side yards, right?
But there has to be a step in for the second story under our current design guidelines.
Right, but it does, it won't meet 45 degrees.
No.
It will not, because it's five feet and five feet, and you're going up to 28 feet or something. So.
But the maximum height overall, even to the ridge, is only 25 feet, so that's, that's a big difference to a four- or five-story building.
But you're not at forty, from side yard to side yard, you're not meeting a 45-degree angle.
Correct.
So, I think there's still a gap in the description of this.
So, and for El Camino specifically, we don't really have, I think there's only a couple of instances where it backs on to somebody's side yard versus their rear yard.
I understand.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that it doesn't cover that.
Correct, you're, you're correct.
So.
Did you?
Just want to add on to that is the, the side yard is closer is because there's no family functions of the house, and, and we apply this 45-degree to the rear yard when they're butting each other, because that's where the activity is, your swimming pool, kitchen, your living room, patio, bedrooms, it becomes visible.
But then you might want to just say that this specifically is to the front and the backyard. This 45-degree applies only to the front and backyards.
Okay, no, we can help that.
So, for El Camino, it actually apply, oh, we have, this is the multifamily. It would actually apply to the, to the rear yard. We have a different step-back diagram, which I'll, I don't think, which I don't have today, but we did at the other, when you're across the street from residential. So, your front yard, we have a different transition diagram. But we also changed the diagram when you're abutting multifamily, and that label is wrong, sorry. The top blue label is wrong. Oh, it's when you're abutting or across multifamily, so sorry, correct. So, this is multi, this is a multifamily example, so if you abut an apartment complex, your 45-degree angle, we're still using that same transition, but it's measured from the height of that existing multifamily residence. So, we added in on the diagram, if I can make this work.
So, I guess my question is, does the property line start at the middle of the street?
No.
It's behind, it's behind the sidewalk.
Behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is here, because you could have a very wide street, and you're not going to get a canyon effect by, to me, here it says maximum height across a residential street.
That's the minimum.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna match.
Right, but what I'm saying is, that property line should actually start from the middle of the street, in my opinion.
That's the setback line. It's not a property, the property line cannot be in.
But this says across from residential street, so there's implied to be a street in between these two.
Yeah, it's the, it's actually that one.
It's not actually, seems like it should, that, that angle should be applied from the middle of the street.
So, for when you're across from residential, your first, your first building height that you're gonna see should be matching what's across the street from you, and then from there, you can step back.
Yeah.
We're not using a 45-degree angle here. We're use, we're gonna be using a dis, a distance, like, for 20 feet, you need to match that height, and then you can go up.
Can you go back to the previous diagram?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
So, here, you still have the 45-degree.
Right, so this is when you are adjacent to the property line. So, this is the, I'm
Okay, so
I apologize if I forgot to include that other diagram, because there's two that go with this. So, this is when, this is when you're immediately adjacent, so you share a property line with another multifamily development. You're gonna match, so even if this was their side yard, you know, you're gonna start by matching.
Right, but then you have, you should remove that maximum height across residential street. That's very misleading.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we'll fix the wording, yeah.
Okay.
I think two diagrams got confused in their text.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. So, if you're across the street, you match the height, and then
Yeah.
how, what angle can you then?
So, like I said, we're not doing an angle, we're doing a setback or step-back distance.
So, the step-back is what, five feet?
I think we have 20 feet.
20 feet?
So.
20 feet for one story of 10 feet?
So, your step-back of, so the, the setback itself of the building could be at zero feet. Your maximum height for the first 20 feet is gonna match whatever's across the street.
I understand. But then, but, but if you're only adding one floor to that, then you're going across 20 feet and going up only 10 feet. So, it
Right.
Seems
Well, that you could go
Seems, seems too shallow to me.
Too shallow?
Yeah, seems like it should be really, I think you should apply a 45-degree angle.
I'd have to look at that, I'd have to look at that, we can look at that. And they did have
Which is in the previous diagram, anyway, I think.
Yeah, that's, yeah. But again, it's measured from a shared property line versus
No, it was, it was, the previous diagram had the 45-degree from
From the shared, from the shared property line, yeah.
Okay, I got it. But it does show the 45 continuing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or the
It'll go up to whatever the maximum height limit is.
Yeah, and I prefer that. That you match it and then go up at 45.
There are maximum height limits, yeah, per land use designation.
I think the general plan that I saw said eight stories for office on El Camino.
The current general plan?
Yeah.
It's, yes, it's currently six. Unless, are we missing, unless we're missing a policy?
I'll look again, but I'm pretty sure.
In the ECR section, possibly. Oh, if just in general.
Okay. All right, I still think this needs work.
Come back with
All right.
Clarification.
I'm an engineer, remember?
So, I can do engineer drawings instead, would that make it easier?
Okay.
They did have an example of what that step-back would, could look like across the street. That's all I got?
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.